I can hear you. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Sarah.
And what we'll do next meeting, we'll deal with that at the end of the meeting. It looks like we're gonna, because of everything that's happening, we're gonna have a July meeting where we usually don't. We may move into two meetings in August. We'll leave it to the board to decide. But it appears there's enough issues going on that I don't think we wait to the second week of August, less than two weeks before schools coming back in to have our first meeting after the summer. But, so what I, the reason I was saying this is, next meeting, maybe you want to give me the recorder? I'll take the one from my office and bring it up here, and then I'll just send you to the digital file. Will that work?
Oh, it would completely, and actually, I'll just come to the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, so much easier if I'm there, so, thank you. I didn't realize how many people were gonna be there. My fault.
Before you go, Matt, can I ask Marsha, Sue Cannell, and Jody to mute yourselves, please? If you can, thank you.
Alright, so the first issue I'm gonna link up with three, before we move on, I think we have two preliminary matters to pick up before we go into the schedule. First one was the meeting. I apologize to everybody that was scheduled for online. I've been asking the SU since last Wednesday to schedule this meeting in person. I've been asking for phone calls. I've sent mails. We asked this before meeting. The superintendent responded back something along the lines of, "Please don't make this political," and then refused to change the agenda, which is actually set by the board chair. The boards oversee the superintendent, so this was an unfortunate situation for the SU administration that's listening in on the telephone currently. Considering this issue and that I'm dealing with it right now, we asked for a live meeting as a board. We're sitting here, we're practicing social distancing. It's rather unfortunate that this happened, and now we're dealing with these communication issues because of it. We do need to figure out how people can stay home and call into this meeting. Some people do not feel safe in this environment, that I agree with, but we need to find a way to make it flow. And the response to that is not to be on the telephones. Those meetings are extremely difficult for everyone to, I guess, handle business, look over school matters. And so anyway, it's a big issue for me when people are not allowing us to meet in person, refuse to change the schedule. Results in this kind of confusion. Louis, I'm not giving you a hard time, but at the moment, I'm not signing any funds over to the SU until this matter is resolved about holding meetings, what the responsibility of the superintendent is, and how people maintain themselves. So if this board decides that we're gonna meet in person, it's my opinion, we meet in person. That's something that's not overruled by the superintendent's office, and then we're told it's gonna be on the phone. We're here today, and I thank people for coming. This is gonna be clunky, but we'll work through it the best we can. Second issue, and I'll just make the motion myself. It is a little bit out of order, but I think before we start, the question is here, whether we wear masks when we're on the school property. So I'll save us the time and make the motion that we wear a mask, that everybody wear a mask when they're here at Rutland Town. Is there a second to that motion? So you second the motion. Discussion, board members? Any discussion on that? So my position is, I made the motion, so we have the discussion. The motion's on the floor, whether everybody should have to wear a mask here at Rutland Town. That's the motion that's pending. My personal position on this has changed as of last week in the fact that if we're going to open up restaurants and bars, and no one's wearing masks down there, it seems ridiculous to me that you're gonna leave a restaurant and bar where obviously no one's wearing a mask, and then come up here to Rutland Town School for a board meeting, and then put a mask on. Or that you're here at the school and put a mask on. I have people that are out attending social functions of 10 to 25 people, not wearing a mask, and then coming here and obviously asking that a mask be put on. So for me, it's, it's, there's a lot of debate, and I really don't want to engage in it. At the end of the day, I don't feel it's appropriate to be doing it at one place, not at another. You suddenly put it on, but at your friend's house on the weekend when there's 20 people, it's okay, because you know they're safe. I leave everyone to follow the governor's order, and that's gonna be my position when we go to vote on it. But, so anybody else want to add to that at all? So I'll go ahead, and I'm gonna have to roll call everything because of the people listening at home. I'll start out with Lynn down at the end, and I'll work through on every vote. Lynn, yea or nay?
To wear a mask.
To wear a mask at every meeting. So that was a yes. Lynn is voting yes. Karine? Karine is voting no. Shawna, can you hear me? Oh, she's muted? That's right. Shawna, I'm gonna presume that you're hearing.
I can hear you. Sorry about that.
Alright, thank you very much. So Karine is voting no. Tim?
I mean, I'm gonna vote no, but I do want to, because I don't really, I haven't seen anywhere where it's like, well, it's mandatory in different towns and things like that, but not in ours. I don't really know how we enforce something like that. But I guess I would encourage that the communication piece be dialed in, certainly by the next meeting, so that someone can comfortably dial in and not attend if they choose, you know, without the clunkiness that you mentioned. I mean, I wear a mask out 99% of the time because I'm a vendor in the local stores and things like that, and it's recommended by them, required in the vendor for many places. So I'm not uncomfortable with it, and I'm fine with it, but yeah, it's my choice to do that.
Awesome. Thank you, Tim. That was a no. Russ? That is a no. Myself, I'll vote on this. That is a no. So for the record, Shawna, that was four nos, one yes, Lynn voting yes, the other four voting no. I believe that leaves us in a position here of following the governor's order. Any recommendations? If you feel comfortable, that's fine. We're certainly gonna have to deal with this as we approach September. We might take up these issues, obviously, whether it be in July or August. We'll see where things progress and how we move forward and what's gonna happen. But at the moment, there will not be a mandatory mask policy here at Rutland Town School. We'll deal with it as we move forward. Next item up is approval of the agenda. It looks like I've had one request to change. We will in executive session, we'll take up an executive session and bump anything that needs to go there. Right now, we have a director of maintenance position open at the school. That is gonna move into executive session as we work through the hiring process for that. So that item is gonna come on there tonight. So that's one addition. That's gonna move into the executive session slot. Any other changes, additions? Lynn? I'm sorry, what's that? That is correct. Yep. Thank you. No, I think that's great. That's a point of clarification, so my motion was somewhat left open. Why don't we just start with board meetings? So for board meetings, is it mandatory? I'll make that amended to the motion. Is that alright? Add board meetings? So the motion is at board meetings not to wear a mask before we take up the other one at school. I'm gonna leave that to the Department of Education, so thank you for clarifying on that. So I may be amended. Question. Alright, thank you. So your vote on the amended motion. Lynn, is a no?
I mean, the yes.
Matt.
Yes. So the motion would be to wear masks at the school board meeting. No, thank you. Karine? Tim? Russ? Myself, no. That's five nos now to the amended motion. No, yays. This was only in regards to the school board meetings. We'll leave the school to follow recommendations from the Department of Education and from the governor's office. So moving on, changes to the schedule, additions, deletions, anything anyone wants to bring up? Moving on, teacher, staff, community comments. I'm gonna have to break this up a little bit because of the phone, and I will do my best. I'm gonna wait five to 10 seconds before an answer. Anybody on the telephone that's calling in want to make any comments? Hearing none, I'll move to the people in the room.
I don't know.
Oh, go ahead, please.
I've lost all audio. I can't hear anything.
Can you hear me now, Shawna? There wasn't any, there wasn't any talking. I was waiting.
I can hear you, but I'm having trouble hearing anyone else. I hear you fine.
That's fine. I say that jokingly, but we're doing the best we can tonight, and I think we'll have to work through it. If there's an issue, we can try and clarify. We'll try and keep track of notes as well, and then maybe we'll call a phone call tomorrow and do the best we can, okay?
Okay, thank you.
And I can see you there. Perfect. Anybody in the room? I think we have an option now if there's anything anyone wants to bring up. So the two choices are to speak throughout the meeting and maybe a topic's brought up, or do you want to talk now? Ms. McPhee? Thank you. So everybody at home, Ms. McPhee just brought up she would like to know what's gonna happen in the fall, what we're looking at for restrictions, and how we're planning on moving about through the fall. That was Nicole Petrie from the audience asking a question. I'm gonna roll down to a couple of different people. Anybody else want to add to that?
I'm also curious about what the school has to do with how we're planning this year. For months, we've been trying to make it better. It's horrible, but it's always... I know that I've had a small opportunity to help graduate, and although it was very quick, I really appreciate the times that was the time, even though my first one was in the past. I still think it would be... What kind of emotional support? Are they going forward or...?
I can't hear a thing.
If I can make a suggestion, the person who's addressing the board meeting will need, just like any other forum, to come toward the camera and microphone and make their statement within range of the microphone.
Perfect.
Yeah, what I'm gonna do, Greg, I'm just gonna summarize what the person's saying. This is what we have to deal with as a result of...
Thank you, Greg.
Why don't you just come up?
We're taking notes, and I'm gonna summarize when each person is done as we roll down through to try and make it easier on you and the best we can. We have Miss Keshabah who's coming closer right now. She's brought up two issues. One, well, actually, a third wasn't an issue, was to beg the staff for the graduation that took place yesterday. First issue, what's going on in the fall. Second, what's being done for students' emotional support. And then just question, if you want to add.
I think that was about it right now, but I might say something else.
Alright. I still can't hear.
He said that's about it for right now, Shawna. If there's Marshall out later.
Shawna, you have to...
Yeah, I'm sorry. I still can't hear. I am so sorry. I'm so...
Shawna, you have to, if you're talking, after you stop talking, you have to mute your microphone.
I will.
Alright, so Miss Keshabah brought up two issues, again, Ms. McPhee. The fall, the second one, what's being done for students' emotional support. If I can't turn it over to the administration, emotional support?
So I think what we had offered this year was that we had a guidance counselor, a teen counselor, a really Swayze checking in on kids, and we also had Tracy Savaka, connected with their people, and they have met in both one-on-one and small groups for kids. We are open to feedback about, and I believe Judy and Chris, and I think we need to hope to get, and talk about that later, trying to get feedback from parents to see how we can do better. I would like to know if we have to do this again, but this was cheap fast, and we can always do better. So I'm open to suggestions by all names.
Can you come up here, Cam, please?
Okay. Going forward.
It was a very small substitute for day of contact, so I think it was effective, and it was great. Recommend more of that? Again, these are all scenarios in the future if we're in this situation, not, you know, if we were in a traditional situation in the fall. But I think more mandatory stuff like that, so have, so rather than, you know, a student having to reach out, or a parent say, "Oh, can I get a one-on-one or something?" It's gotta be like a lot of one-on-ones, a lot of teachers communicating with students, not just like an office hour with a one-hour thing, or that would be a suggestion. And it can really fall into this entire comment about what the fall is gonna look like for all sorts of classes, but it does come up with the emotional, because I think Ms. Swayze did a very good job in the half hour a week, you know, that she had ran in these six other girls. So I would suggest it for everyone, certainly the middle school, whether they want it or not. Well, it's not terrible, but also, this kind of goes to our point again, I think the whole problem with the last few months. Like, I have no idea if my fourth grade daughter would have answered email from Ms. Swayze questions. Like, you know how, like, I don't know. So if she sent a survey, it wasn't to me. It may have been to a fourth grader. I would love if she, you know, so I hope she would have responded to that survey, because that would have been great. No, I have no idea. And I don't know how we're gonna, I don't know how she would have been back with an anonymous survey with a bunch of kids.
It wasn't anonymous.
Well, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. Yeah. Yeah, like I said, I think Ms. Swayze and Tracy, who we did a little contact with, did a good job, but it probably is that some of that contact might need to be more mandatory, just in their schedule, and have, you know, have some service, maybe just reach out to the kids. Because I don't think a child always knows that they might need a little support, right, when they're isolated. That would be my two cents to that question.
So Ms. Williams, can you just talk about some of the emotional supports out there?
Thank you.
Yep. So I'm just gonna, everyone at home, there was two things that were said. One, that Russ had mentioned, that he echoed the, I guess, the sentiments of the people that have spoken, that it was a tough spring for everybody. It was difficult, and students essentially were isolated. They were left out, and hopefully, essentially, we never have to do this again. Ms. Galoppo followed up, talking about some of the European things that are going on, what we've dealt with, but also, what are we looking at for the fall? And so I think that's a good segment, or segue into what the fall is going to look at. I know there were some people looking for, obviously, what's gonna happen this fall, and it's June. And as much as I'd like to engage in that and spend two hours talking about what the fall should look like now, I think the best thing for us to do is obviously wait till August. This may come down from the Department of Education, where they're asking us to, they make something mandatory. And if that's the case, then our debates essentially don't matter, because we're gonna be following the Department of Education. The Department of Education may punt to us and say, "Well, each local community is different. We're gonna leave it to the boards and the schools to deal with," at which point, we'll take up those concerns in August. The other thing is, so much has changed, I would say, and people are looking for us about what's gonna happen in the fall. I do have a vision for what's gonna happen to the fall. I'm one board member sitting up here. But my personal opinion is, and I will continue to vote this way, and I don't believe anything is gonna change that from what I've seen so far, but coming in this fall, this school cannot run on a couple of days a week, kids coming from 8:00 a.m. till noon and then being picked up. You might as well take every single parent that's associated with the children and take them out of employment, if that's the way we're gonna run the fall. This school has to be open. The economy has to start, and I agree with the people talking about national security and the other things, but we have to get back to normal sometime. And so what my position is for the fall, and I'll continue to vote this way, is gonna be that school is open, that there be video cameras set up in the classroom with teachers teaching. And that way, if someone has a medical issue, if someone has a reason for not wanting to come, that they're not isolated and, you know, forced to either homeschool or attend a different school, that they could watch in from home. There's gonna be limits on that, and I'm not sure how we get to it. But we can't get in and close the entire school because four people in the class don't want to go. And at the same time, we can't be forcing people to expose themselves for risk if they have a different scenario. And that's what I think has caught everybody off guard about this, is that everybody is approaching this situation from a different position. If you're 70 years old, you're viewing it from one way. If you're a 40-year-old with absolutely no health issues, you're viewing it a different way. And I was looking at this scenario from a teacher's perspective, and it has to be difficult, because we have some people that are about to retire in their 60s, and then we have some people that just got hired last year and are fresh out of college. Each person is seeing this different, so the teacher that's fresh out of college may not have an issue with showing up here, but this 65-year-old may be saying, "I don't feel safe in the workplace." And we're gonna run into those issues from here to Burlington. And I think we just have to work through them the best we can in each jurisdiction. But also, everything is gonna change. The stock market was tanking two months ago. Everybody thought they were losing their life savings. The stock market two days ago passed its historical highs, and the S&amp;P is up above that. The Dow is following closely. So we didn't know that was gonna happen two months ago, and I don't know what's gonna happen in August. But my position is that this school remain open, that we do not try to continue with this homeschooling and making parents teachers. And I've even said myself, and this is just a personal feeling, but if this continues on in the fall, I will seriously have to think about homeschooling the children, because that's what I've been doing for the last two months. And if I'm gonna continue that in the fall, it's not gonna be with people checking in with me and following up with me and trying to answer emails and figure out where my kid is. We're gonna have to find an alternative teaching plan, but it's not gonna be coming in here for two hours a day, then my kids go home. It just, in my opinion, it can't work that way. So, but I think the best thing for everybody to do is really to somewhat punt the ball till August, and we get to it. I've been asking tech to look into it, and Greg's on the phone now. He's our tech director. Whether we can in fact set up those meets, have them videotape in the classrooms so the people that do need to stay home can do so without disrupting the lives for everybody. And I think that's gonna work, but then again, who knows? So I wanna, Drew, did you have a comment?
I have a question and comment based on the previous comment. Question is, who has the final say regarding school being open or not? Even if the guidelines, which are guidelines, not rules, based in emotion and politics, not medical science from the CDC? And even if the State Department of Education says the guideline is, do this, who has the final say for school? That's my question, and my comment is that the CDC recommendations are, and all recommendations are just that. They're recommendations, and currently, they're really not based in medical science.
But the question is, essentially, who makes the final call come August? And you must understand, these are just general recommendations from the CDC. So I will answer this, and it's kind of what I said, is that if the governor comes down with this in August, or the Department of Education, and says, "This is gonna be a law, this is gonna be an order, and you're gonna follow it," in my opinion, we have to follow that. I mean, I have no choice here. I can't override the legislature nor the governor. I'm not sure I completely agree with an order from the governor, but the governor has also made recommendations. And there's an interesting juxtaposition between the two ones, an order, one's recommendations, what are we working with? What I will say, those CDC guidelines that came out were completely impossible to comply with. They're preposterous, and I almost don't even want to have a discussion about them, because they are so far out there. It's impossible to socially distance kids six feet apart in the classroom sizes we have with 20 kids. I will not allow the budget, or at least myself anyway, to pay for spit guards or whatever those guards are on the desks while every desk is facing forward. I think the CDC has an idea that the classrooms are much bigger than they are. You cannot run a school with those guidelines that came out. But I think that's somewhat what you're playing on, Drew, is that a lot of times in these recommendations, medical staff may plan on the worst-case scenario, and say, "Well, you do this, you do this, you do that." But it's not gonna be practical for people to follow that. And I think we saw that... And I think we saw that head-on with the CDC. These were the most extreme cases. And I've heard that from Dr. Anthony Fossey. And the, you know, best-case scenario, worst-case scenario, this is what you should do. Unfortunately, though, we're all living and we're part of this economy. We have jobs, we have lives. This thing has to move forward. It can't, we don't have the ability in this country to suddenly go home and say, you know, we'll be back next year and everything will be fine. And, you know, when we hear from the medical staff, it's the absolute worst-case scenario or best-case scenario, that would be great if we could all just go home and everybody just call a timeout for a month. We may end up eradicating the common cold, but it's impossible to actually do that or even follow through with it. So the CDC guidelines, I see, is impossible to comply with. They're not even a discussion for me, even though people have brought it up with me. It's, it's, it's not really a valid point. So anyway, that's where I see fall going in the fall.
I just asked the question again. So it's a recommendation, what are we gonna do? Along, we have to follow along. It's a recommendation. Then we get to do what we decide as a board to do?
I think that's the way they're gonna send it.
Is that the answer to the question we're looking for?
It's, the board's gonna make that decision. And so the interesting thing will be here, whether this board makes this decision, or the Greater Rutland County Supervisory Union comes down with a decision, which then applies out to the schools. And I'm on that board as well, so I'm not sure what they're gonna take for a position or how it's gonna go. But I have a sneaking suspicion, I'll get to you in two seconds, Kim. My inkling, I just, I honestly feel this way. I don't believe the Department of Education is gonna come down with a standing order that affects every school from Londonderry to Winuski, to Newport, to Bennington. Because Bennington is in a completely different situation than Williston and Burlington. Burlington has more cases, more contact going on, and then there's some counties with almost none. So I think, my honest opinion is, I believe in August, that they're gonna put out recommendations that we follow. And I believe, they may put them in forcefully as orders, but I have, they may put some general guidelines in, which I think may happen. They may take up the mask debate and say, you're gonna wear that if you're on school grounds, but yes, school is open. That may come down, but I think they're gonna leave the majority of it to the local levels to deal with. Anybody else from the board wanna comment on that? Anybody else from the audience wanna add to that? Questions? And Ms. Williamson? Yep.
There's somebody else that joined, so...
No, if the governor comes out, I have a feeling the Education Department is gonna come out with recommendations, follow these safe practices. My recommendations. They could, or you make some of the, you're going to follow this, you're gonna have masks on your kids, and this is the way it's gonna go. The others could be recommendations. I'm not so sure. They're perfect. I don't believe that that's gonna happen. But the order that the government was, was an absolute order, and it was, that was not an actual, that was a... I don't believe, I can say there's a change to happen.
It's just like mask right now, the governor's recommending you wear, not saying you have to. And if that happens, then the board, along with our administrators, can decide what's gonna be best for uptown.
And, you know, the other thing is...
What I mean by that is, is once the governor opens up the restaurants, the bars, and everything else, do we really think school's gonna come in September and then he's gonna close down the entire economy again till June? Once you open this cat back out of the bag, I don't believe the governor's office is gonna have the political will to turn around and try and shut everything back down again. Because I go back to my position, which is, if there's 25 to 50 people down there in the restaurant, eating and drinking, they're around each other, and people are out at parties of 20 people, or close friends of 15 and 20, you're gonna have a hard time coming here to the school and say, close it down, we can't be around each other. And we're gonna be forced to deal with these issues. But I have no doubt that the school is gonna be open, maybe subject to recommendations, maybe a law mixed in there too, forceful guidance. And then the school districts are gonna be left to work through this ourselves and get there. Anybody else that wants to add to this?
I mean, I think clear it.
Can I just ask who has the 978 area code number ending in 01 that joined us to please identify yourself? You need to press star six to unmute.
All right. Hi, it's Kathleen Saunders.
Hi, Kathleen, thank you.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi.
So just have her mute that. Kathleen, mute that, thank you.
I can mute her. How do I mute it?
I got you, Kathleen.
We got it.
Hi, Julie McCanna. I guess to kind of tag on what Tim was just mentioning, I'm all for waiting till August to make decisions in terms of whether or not we feel that, though, it's safe to open schools and things like that. We won't know kind of where we stand until then. In the meantime, my concern would be that we aren't developing a homeschooling plan, that if, for some reason, I hope not, I do, that we are homeschooling our kids in September, that things look different. And from that, I mean, in terms of what is required from you guys as kind of the leaders of the school, from the teachers. What they gave the kids varied so greatly. I'd like to see more standards of what you guys are requiring from them, in terms of contact with the kids, schoolwork, things like that. I had one kid that was with her teacher for hours a day, and one kid that was zero. And that, to me, was kind of unacceptable.
During her spring with RTS, she thinks that we need to get a plan if we are in fact going to be facing homeschooling this fall. It's a possibility. She believes it's incumbent upon the school to get a plan ready to homeschool. And in furtherance of that, she had said that essentially her experience here was, one teacher had been there, essentially working a lot daily, and the other one had put in zero effort. And she's concerned, I would suspect, or, not zero, but...
Zero contact? Emails go out, here's your work for the week. Have a great week, call me if you need something.
Hi, we're being, we had the same experience in our house. Yeah, we have one teacher who has super involved instruction every day, talking to the kids. And the other child got email Sunday night, Monday morning, here's your work for the week, pass it in Friday, call me if you need to.
Potentially, her was emailed out on Sunday and Monday. Call me if you have anything to add.
And I very well, I'll give a shout out to the Spanish teacher, who managed an entire grade for an hour a week. If she can do that... I'm like, if she can be in a chat, our regular teacher.
Mostly just with one of them, with one of them. But it was mostly the kids needed to seek the teacher out if they had a problem. It was the morning attendance, but that was, that was the day. We want our kids to come back, but we want a plan in case they're not quite...
I would just hate to wait till the end of August and then be like... I can't do this in December. I don't...
The model teachers need to be college accountable to the same level.
What this is gonna look like? Their standards?
Well, we had expectations that we put together on our continuation of learning plan that the state had us put together. Yep. Yeah. We did have that for everyone. And we did have our expectations for what those would be. But we are looking at, you know, starting to look at those options. I mean, today was the last day of school, so we're starting to finish up our report cards and everything. And so we will be having the task force meetings to look at how things might look, you know, in different scenarios for the fall. And so your feedback is important to us, so this is helpful.
Sarah, can you please change that microphone? Oh, you have to do it on the laptop.
Obviously, we had a teacher that sent out an email on Sunday night, sent out an email on Monday, followed up with questions. How does a teacher keep a log of hours when there is no last time to check in on Monday on? How will you satisfy 37 hours in a week? And what logs do you?
The initial goes out and what goes in the lesson study? I'm imagining you do several items.
Well, there can be planning, there can be recording of lessons. One of the things that we tried to do was to be as asynchronous as possible. Many of our teachers also had...
And I think feedback is really important. I was about to go around at it, and I just encouraged them, that please reach out to our teachers through the side side, and please reach out to the administration. One kid that's getting back from work every week, there's supposed to be new learning happening after a full vacation. Happening, and you need to address it, make it so you think feedback is important. The only way to figure out what to do about it is to unmute.
You know, make it clear how hard it was in this past school year? Or just asking that moving forward. And then if you wanted him writing, but I think he's... He didn't go last day of school, probably early, so for me, that's not really... More like kids, like I think that like everybody realized it's hard, and it's like, like, oh, he's early.
But not the teachers. The teachers aren't done today. And that's what I said.
Also, so we tell that, so like, I think summer, like, I don't know this summer, it's just the normal summer, it's only the normal spring, it's not gonna be a normal fall. Like, no... For like resources, I kind of ask for them. And I feel like this is, and you know, schools, and I'm like, all right, we lost three months. I don't know, I just think, although we did, and I'll just... I think that's what's gonna happen over the next year or so. And not for the states there. If it happened, obviously, we have a school that, and that will... That's great. But, and this is, okay, I don't, I don't, I don't... Thing else, like, you know, I'm up in Killington, we're not really... So that August 20, whatever day, it's like, we hit the ground running, it's not like, how are we gonna handle this? And so that one, I think that, I hadn't heard this idea about my ex with it. Mom's getting like high school, and they're like, they're saying, that, I mean, it's like, I'm having the day... And, so they're kind of like, more like a six-hour day or something, rather than a parent having to collect all work and send out a script.
So Ms. Williamson has said for those people at home that there's gotta be a flow. There's somehow, she's planning on an issue popping up, because she's seeing it at Killington. And it is a worry of mine, because we are seeing that out there, that in fact, some of these issues are gonna follow through in the fall. We may end up being on the computer, you know, if something happens. And I expect that. If there were an outbreak around here and a class gets taken out, and the school's disinfecting, no one's gonna be here, then we're gonna be trying to work from home again. And there's gotta be a way to get that done. I'm gonna comment on that, but I mean, I have Mr. Lightheart to make follow up.
I would agree with a couple of the things that were said, and we're just trying to get your feedback. It's hard with kids of different ages. I love it if... Or in our house, there are kids there, they're wandering away. There is their scene. There were two of us. I spent 45 minutes with a state roll every day trying to log into the 10 minutes. And that's what they're changing with as time goes on, because I need people running on the line.
Yeah. So you're basically saying, Drew, that we can't do that again in the fall?
If there is a school open that my kids can go to, they will go through it, but why? All right. Thank you. And then I wanted to bring up the one thing that, I can't address, Mr. Lightfield. The, one of the problems we got here is that a second grader is different than a fifth grader, is different than an eighth grader, and the high school. And so I didn't have a lot of complaints about the seventh grader, except that I couldn't know what he was doing and what was happening. But he was self-sufficient, moving out of home when he felt like it. Yeah, I'm gonna be skipping these assignments, but sorry, we're too busy at our house for art. And I got the email, I'm like, what? They, so these were the kind of pictures, but calling them, I go, we're not too busy for art. Who says that, but I said it to the grader. So we're working through it, but that was different than every now.
Right, and getting them on the computer, how do you do that? So the high school, I heard a lot less complaints, but the interesting thing about the high school is, you were on at 8:00 AM, at your class, on your computer, rolling through the day, and had it at the Lighthard household, when there's four kids and...
But you can do that in the...
Middle school... Middle school, you might be able to accomplish that. What do you do with the house when you have four kids?
I have to just, I, I shouldn't have said that because Drew is an entire, and this is, that's a good point.
Matt makes a great point. This school.
Totally different scenario than me. Like I'm talking really, and even I think that the lower grade, I think Bren.
We need you to come up here and talk.
I think that the fourth grade with Bren, with one teacher, one classroom, one person guiding, wasn't that bad. We happen to have Ms. Chastley and I think she did a really good job. I just think it could have been more, but I don't know. I guess she, you know, it's like there's a, there's an ending. The middle school is where my, my concern comes from. And that is where I'm entering, you know, sort of about fifth and eighth. So like the younger grades, Drew's problem is in mine and it's totally different. So maybe it's, you know, to evaluate that separately, which I know is kind of the case because I heard rumors of like middle school schedule versus younger schedule or whatever. Whether or not that's even true. I don't know. But. I'm talking about middle school and I do think that middle school can be, if it has to be somewhat more similar to high school. What I've, what I've seen from other schools around the country and our high school. Where it's classes that you are showing up for teachers that are presenting the class. And then, yeah, then you can follow up with your teacher at, you know. The, the hangout time or whatever, but like that, that a day is rolling on. Because I think what happened was you have the chance, and I think it's happening to a lot of kids, that you can like barely attend classes anymore. It's like college, like you can cut your classes and the kids. And especially with parents that are working, like who's, you know, who's really. Monitoring that for a seventh grader at home who can also go and, you know. Do whatever. So I like for the middle school, that model or that possibility for the lower grade that can't really. I don't, I don't really have a lot.
Yeah. So I'm going to sum up and the interesting thing is here.
Um, but I do think when you have one teacher, it seems to be better.
Yep.
You know, for the, for the younger grades, one teacher checking in almost daily. Rather than the middle school model where you have so many classes. And teachers and then kind of no accountability, like no.
Like optional.
Check-ins really, except like when the teachers were scheduling as their office hours, but. That wasn't really a lesson being presented. So that's what I would like.
So this is kind of strange. I'm going to interrupt the meeting for just a second. It's just a personal quirk of mine that I'm watching right now and I can't do it anymore. But this is the new day and age that we're at. The, the only reason is it really doesn't make sense to me. The social distance and then to have every parent come up here and sit in the same chair and hold the table with cuts to the end table and why the hell are we social? This is, these are the issues that we're running into. People need to hold the microphone. So I'm going to try and summarize real quick what people said, but what Kim has said, she was speaking about middle school. And the issue that she, she has, she thinks it should be more like the high school where the middle school is checking in on time at class. You got your eight o'clock TA. Guess what? Google meets is now on eight o'clock. Your kid's logging in. And then your kid's following through with that. Obviously, that's not going to work very well for K through four. But through five, through eight, that should be able to work and run like the high school. Um, and I have Ms. Saunders' question. And now what I'm going to do, I'm going to summarize. So I'm just asking you to keep it somewhat short. But I'm just not going to have people up and sit in the same chair again. It doesn't make sense to me. So.
I have a couple of comments.
Yep.
One is that. Um, I, I really have very similar. Views from what you both said. Um, we ended up going online to this school called outschool.com to back up our lessons. Because we were basically just doing homework. And there was no teaching going on other than what I could get through. So to back up the lesson, we went on and they did do classes and there were younger kids. So to a certain degree, I disagree that you can't have the younger kids taking classes. You have to down, you have to bring it to their level and make it interesting. Because this school has classes for all ages. And we paid to go to that. And we backed up whatever we were doing. If we were doing division, I went on and found a division class and signed the kids up for it and made them sit and watch it. And it was a Zoom meeting that they watched this class. Um, so I think it can be done, but there's probably. Education from the teachers on how to do it. Um, because I also feel that if we're going to go back to just. What we did this spring and I commend you because you had to just jump into it all at once and do it. Um, I am looking at online schools to homeschool with because I'm going to have to work full time and do it. And it just doesn't work to just follow somebody else's lesson plan. I'd rather be creative and following my own lesson plan.
I agree with that a hundred percent.
Try to get through it. And the other, um, from a health point of view, and I might not be a hundred percent accurate on this, but just a suggestion. Could you do something where you would cut the classes, be able to social distance? Um, and have half the class go for two weeks, teach that, teach the majority of the curriculum. So they're in school, they're getting teaching. And then that, that's group A. And then they go home for two weeks and they do homework that relates to that. Do they do, um, you know, the typical homework, like what you said, home with us? That backs up the lessons they just learned. That allows for quarantining if any kid does get exposed. If you rotate the teachers that way as well, that allows the teachers to rotate too, if they get exposed.
So I want to answer that. I'll summarize for everybody at home real quick. Uh, Ms. Saunders brought up two things. One, that at her home personally, she needed to back up the instruction or at least what she got for curriculum for her.
Uh, Matt, uh, Matt, hold on a second. Um, we can hear everything that she said because the right 360 degree mic is on. So we can hear everyone in the room pretty much now.
We're doing good now. Okay. Perfect. Thank you for that. Thank you, Sarah.
Only took me what? Hour and 10 minutes.
Fantastic. I didn't want to summarize. So I, I'll, I just want to follow up real quick with myself. Um, that I actually moved on over to IXL, uh, which was I backed up their stuff. You were using, it was like outschool.com. We were using IXL, which is the homeschool program. We can set second grade, third grade, and we moved over to that curriculum because it was easier to follow. We can hold it to them. We can look over their shoulder, tell whether they're answering questions, follow it up on the app. Um, so we moved, moved over to the homeschool program. That's what you said you did and you did that, uh, to back up the, come, uh, to back up, you know. Essentially, possibly a lack of curriculum, but that's how I felt.
In the lack of knowledge on my own part.
Yeah.
But I didn't know how to do some of it, but I hadn't done it in years. So how to teach it when you haven't done fractions? Or multiplying fractions in 20, 30 years?
Yep.
You know, I was like, hold on a minute.
That was a, we all ran it.
Let me figure out how they're trying to teach you how to do it. And, you know, so I could watch somebody else teach it and then I could go through and do the Ruttentown work. Much easier. Because we got sent home a book that didn't have any. Lesson plan in, like it, it was four sheets of to do work, but it's with no instruction on how to do it.
So, and I, I think if people at home have heard you, the, I agree with a lot of the things you're saying. The second option though, I don't know about the two weeks on, two weeks off. That's the stuff that's going to push me personally to say, this isn't worth it to me. Because if you give me my kids every two weeks, then what happens to my job and what do I do for work? If I have my kids at home for two weeks, do I just stop working? You might as well shut the school down again. The other problem I have with it is we obviously pay a lot of money in property taxes. But if I, I can't do this again. And if I come to the school and I'm essentially told, other than there's an outbreak, other than there's a medical emergency, your kids are going to be home with you. One of the reasons I'm going to keep the kids home and homeschool them. I'm not paying the full $16,000 per student to Ruttentown School. If you're not going to be here teaching the children and we're all going to be home again and I'm going to be the teacher. And so if you choose to pull your child out and homeschool them, the school loses that per pupil price for each student that goes out and goes home. And I honestly believe, and I was waiting till August, but that's a, that's a concern that parents need to think about across the state of Vermont. Do you want $16,000 going to the school? If your kids aren't going to be there and you're not going to have a teacher and they're going to be monitoring you at home and what you're doing. I'll go home and work from IXL and what other curriculum we decide. Or look at a private school that's going to be open versus being here and, you know, essentially having the kids home again. I can't do it. And so that's interesting. I don't, I don't think a lot of people realize how that works. But if your kids are not here, the school does not get credit for it. And so I am not going to allow credit to be done if the kids are not going to be here. It's almost a political stance, but it was very hard. And I think I was doing pretty good with the home learning programs as well, uh, in following up. But anyway, Ms. McPhee.
I have a few things to say. First of all, Sarah started to tell us that we shouldn't have waited the last day of school to complain. I sent the administration an email. I know several parents who sent the administration an email. About not actually having face to face teaching. And part of the answers we all got were that teachers had kids at home. They were essential employees that were entitled to daycare. And they were getting paid full time while the rest of us were on unemployment. So. I'll forget about the fact that our kids weren't learning. I, I mean, we should not be paying them full time if we're going to go into another year of them taking care of their kids instead of fully teaching. Second, we have a rise in eighth grade, which the entire board of the administration admits was behind going into seventh grade. Now they're extra behind. I want to know what's going to happen with that. And, um. Now I want to link them. Oh, I heard a few people have been talking about our most recent standardized test grades. And I'm told that the math grades for the entire school were terrible. What tests were those and when were they given and what were our scores?
Administration.
We didn't have standardized test scores to share because they got canceled because of.
So there were none for the entire year?
There were none.
So what were last year's scores? Will we really far behind the state in last year's?
I think you're talking about the maps, right? Is it maps?
Yeah, we, Sback was canceled in the state, but I think to go back to your first question, Nicole, you asked about, um, the response, the complaints administration that no teaching was happening. We referred to the three parents that complained about that was that there is teaching and we, as a SU, decided to go with an asynchronous approach as we've talked about before. And there's recorded lessons for middle school. So we referred you to the, um, email that gets sent out every Monday with recorded lessons. So kids could go on there anytime to watch their, watch those lessons. That was for seventh and eighth grade, seventh and eighth grade.
Point. I did personally reach out to both Debbie and you about this exact issue. And your response was that. And then my response back to you was that it's not that great. You said, you said, please refer to the video, which I did love it. I'm done. The Google classroom are videos. And I said, that's not great. Like it was no substitute, and there was no video for Mr. Patterson. So that was all, like he never did videos. He supplied his textbook. Pages and e-text for my son. And so that wasn't, so I mean, if there was only three parents and two of them are right here.
With this model and it's been my concern from the get go is that I think with this student centered learning model. I think maybe 10% of kids are going to fall into that category where they're going to take. Personal responsibility.
Oh, to exceed, to, to, to work.
Some kids in a classroom that are basically going to take ownership of their learning. And this model will only work for those kids. But the majority of the kids in middle school do not have the social emotional intelligence and do not have the maturity, I don't think. To take ownership and to go on and watch a video.
No.
I really don't.
Didn't we spend a fortune on all this technology and, uh, the smart boards and everything else? Don't we have the capacity, especially going back to if we open and certain kids at certain times can't come to school? To have the people at home interact with the teacher in the classroom in front of the smart board or does it not work that way?
Matt had brought that up, I think, before a couple of you would come in.
No, I, I envision, I think that's the way, in, in my opinion, just being one out of five up here on this board.
But do we have the technology and.
We have the technology through Google meets. We can do it, I think, through the books. Um, I know Greg is working on that right now. And I also wanted to follow up and this is also goes back to your question, Ms. McKenna. Um, the stu, the teachers and the administration were given from the Department of Education. Uh, was it a month or two ago, you were asked to come up with plans, three plans? Uh, or what are we looking at for the three different options in the fall? So they've been asked to plan. But I don't think it's practical. And at the end of the day, it seems to me that there's going to be a lot of wasted time planning. For something that may not take place in September. So now we're going to make them work and draft these plans and do all this other stuff. None of, two of which we're not going to use because I think you asked for three options that we were looking at. Two of which we're not going to use. So it's going to be a complete waste of time, but they were asked to do this, to come up with a plan, to formulate it. They're looking at the three different options, but I don't see anyone as viable unless it's a school. And I think we could run it off the classroom. Ms. Saunders, we're.
If the government comes down on you and says you have to come up with another plan, then you're back to March where you have to all of a sudden. So you should have other plans.
Well, we have three.
Because it is a reality and we are lucky that we live up here and we're not seeing the numbers. We're very lucky.
Yeah.
But other places are not as lucky. And other parents aren't going to agree with us, some of us, that they will want to keep their kids at home, but they still are entitled to an education. So you, you're going to have to balance that out.
Matt, I don't think it's that different. They, they prepare their plans and we get the technology in place for them to either. Teach it from their house if we stay home and interact with the kid. The high school pulled it off. Everyone is raving about the high school. And that the kids have not missed a beat. There is no reason that we can't follow that model.
And I think one of the things that threw us off here at the town was though, and I asked for that back, I believe in, you know, whether it was March, whether, you know, when this was all starting to come down. Was that we should have a teacher sitting in the classroom and then we can project it out. And we couldn't do that because we were only allowing two to four people in the building at the start of this. I mean, it did change drastically.
Running off Zoom. There was no reason to not hold.
But that's.
And I, the school's big enough that I don't see why a teacher can't be in each classroom teaching and then streaming at home.
Like. My, like everybody's got great points.
Yeah.
I think that we all have been battling with ourselves. Um, I know the teachers are planning for the next week, week and a half. Um, administration has more than heard you. You're not the only ones that have been complaining. Um, but if we could maybe end it and come back in July, because in a month. We're going to, we're going to really know in a month.
Yeah.
What's going to happen. Um, meanwhile, and then if we. And I think there's a, when is that second week that the teachers are coming back?
Asynchronous. They're working asynchronously.
I, I guess that's something we had to discuss before because.
Yeah, there, there, there'll be any meetings on some of these task force, but it'll be all throughout the month of July. They won't all occur on the same week or the same day.
So I'm going to switch, I, I understand what you're getting to, which is it's now 7:30 is our, 5:00. We've been here for an hour and a half. I've got financial budget people on, other things that are going on. This is all valid stuff.
Oh, absolutely.
But I do, just before I get there, I want to do two things, uh, before I just cut this short and end it. First, I want to hear from a teacher. Marcia.
I, I want to.
And Abby, if you'd like to speak too. Absolutely.
Um, hopefully you can hear me. My name is.
They're going to work. It just took me an hour and 10 minutes.
Good. Um, I'm a sixth grade, ELA and social studies teacher currently. And I, I just want to speak on behalf of the sixth grade. My co-teacher Bailey Centers and I worked extremely hard to structure. Hangouts with kids. We did small groups two times a week. So, um, we, we saw the kids, uh, at least twice, so two, two times in a week. So, um, we were in contact with our kids daily. We set up individual meetings with kids. Uh, we set a weekly schedule. So, and we were in contact with the parents, sending the, the schedules out for them too. So. I hear there were some complaints, but I'm just speaking in regards to sixth grade. We made a great effort to make sure the kids, and we were instructing. We, that, that's why we did hangouts. We, we, well, with, because of my content, we really need to have discussions. So we had to discuss our social studies content and, and what we were reading. And then, um, Ms. Sanders would obviously instruct with her math and science. So, um, you know, I just want to say that. I guess that. When the, a statement saying that no learning happened, I guess I'm a little offended because I really put a lot of effort and. I know Ms. Sanders did put a lot of effort.
Okay.
And.
Yeah.
And, 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 and I, and my kids learned. Our sixth grade learned. They, they gained. I mean, yeah, they probably didn't get as much as we could have if we were in school five days a week. I mean, I know I would much have prepared in school, but. My sixth graders, every single one, they learned something. They continue to learn. I mean, maybe their growth wasn't, like they would have been at my school, but it was growth. So I just want to state that because.
So I got to ask you the difficult question. Article in the Wall Street Journal a few days ago. They were able to test some kids and it came out on the chart that there was just about no improvement whatsoever based upon this at home learning. So what was the point? How would you respond to the Wall Street Journal? And again, I don't know what their statistics are, but. They said it didn't, we didn't get the learning out of it that we should have and this was a failed experiment. You don't agree with that?
The kids maybe got emotional support. So they got their teacher.
Yeah.
And, and I think they got instruction as well. I mean, I'm not saying there's a huge amount of growth, but I think they all. Grew in that time with instruction.
I, I like the second that I have a sixth grader and I thought that they did a phenomenal job of keeping the kids involved. They did not make things optional. They had small groups, so they kept it real and they kept it to their abilities. Um, and they also had a nice TA check in. And if they were falling behind, um, they personally.
they personally reached out and scheduled a meeting with the child and worked on what they needed help with. So although, I will say, my daughter did not always give up on all of her assignments. I definitely think she continued to learn through this process. And I appreciated how the sixth grade did it.
Can I just second that too? I have four kids in the school, in the school, in really wonderful experiences with all the grades. And I feel like they all did, like the teachers. And I have very independent learners, so I'm in a different situation. My kids, my kids loved it and they did great. And so this was a great experience for them. But not all kids are in the same boat. So, but I think the teachers were fabulous, at least for my kids.
Thank you. Abby?
I guess I just want to speak more to like the K2 world because I do have the little ones. And I do have to say that I think teachers can be really hard on themselves. I think if you're a good teacher, you constantly want to be better. And looking back on this, we were thrown into this. And do I think I did an excellent job? Absolutely not. But do I think I tried extremely hard? And do I think I connected with every single kid in my class? Absolutely. If a parent called me, emailed me, you name it, if it was Saturday, 7 o'clock at night, 6:00 in the morning, I got back to them within 30 minutes. And you can ask any of them. I was so good. If a parent wanted a different schedule, I gave it to them. We worked so hard. And I think when Julie said that social connection, I think that's huge. We tried to at least stay connected to them. And I do think, you know, we were just talking about kids who are different learners. And I think we have to be aware of that with teachers too. One of my biggest issues is that I live in an absolutely tiny apartment right now. I do not have access to a smart board. I wish I did. And Matt, like you were saying, had I been in the classroom, I would have more technology, more abilities to do. I mean, I had like little whiteboards that I could fit in my living room. I, I literally lived in like 200 square feet. I mean, it was so hard. And I tried. And I was literally just telling my husband the other day, if we keep doing this, I have to get permission to work from my classroom. I need my resources. I need the technology. But I also just need my kids. This has been so hard. I don't know how else to say it.
So I'm not sure what went down in your class, you know, and how, I don't have any second graders. So actually, they were in your class. I have kids and I have Miss Norton in there. But how many times were you able to teach online, let's just say, an average week? How many times were you able to teach a class and send that home to the kids so they could see you and you teach a class online?
Yeah, I met with all of them twice a week. And then I had as many individual sessions as parents wanted. So if they wanted one each week for me to check in, I did that. If they wanted more, I had kids who had two, three, four. Some who I even met with every day, some who FaceTimed me whenever they needed me.
Yeah.
Literally. And my instruction, we did a lot of like photo and stuff like that. Because I mean, it's hard for the second grader to make them sit there and just watch a video. I know you were just saying your kids, you know, they said, oh, go watch these videos. Well, kids aren't always just going to go open up that video and watch it themselves. So we did post some videos, but we also did like pictures in our assignments that gave like step one, step two, step three. We, like I just said, if a parent called me and said, can we talk to you right now? I FaceTimed with them. I got on a Google Meet with them. I can't tell you, there was one family, I must have done it three times a week, every week. It was whatever that family needed. And then twice a week, I met with all my kids because every day seemed like too much for the same times for parents with multiple kids.
Yeah. So were you able to actually though, teach a class online and get it into the houses of the second graders or no? That just wasn't practical?
Well, my home classes were not necessarily teaching. I mean, I did say, do you guys need help with anything? And I would occasionally teach like very small pieces math. But no, like I didn't teach like an entire math lesson, you know? So I have to be honest, in the classroom, it's so much more engaging. You know, we're doing things, we're moving about the room, we're using, you know, different manipulatives. And I mean, I couldn't provide that in everybody's home separately. That was.
Well, I think this may be, I think, not a summer thing, like what has been, and I think this is what I heard when I'm out in the grocery store and I run into a parent, you know, because they know we're on the school board and it's just easier to approach a school board member than always call the administration. I think that is the biggest problem that a lot of families have had, that it's not completely equal with what the kids are getting. Where some kids are having a teacher go on and teach the class every single day or twice a day. Some of it may be 24 weeks only. So I think that's where a lot of the problem has come in, is that people have felt that it's a roll of the dice depending on which teacher you have. Is how much instruction that you're getting on a daily basis. This has been the number one complaint that I've heard. So are there standards in place that there is teaching to occur like every day? I mean, think about it, the kids are typically in the school from 8 to 2:45. I try.
Let me ask you just on that point, is that a question for the administration? Do we have a mandate about how much teaching is occurring right now on a weekly basis that's going on with students?
Like, would this been the standard of how many hours?
I think the question is define teaching. How are you going to administer that requirement if you don't have a definition of what teaching is?
You're right, Nicole.
Debbie?
Well, we have the continuation of learning plan that we put together for the state that, you know, we worked on as an SU admin team for the number of hours of new instruction per, was it per week, Sarah? Or per day? I think it might have been per day. And then our expectation for face-to-face contact with students was in a group meeting was twice per week. That's why most of these teachers said that that's what they were doing. And then additional contact with individual students as needed.
But twice a week for how many hours? Were you saying that there's like essentially two hours of teaching that is required per week? I mean, that is really.
No, that's not, that's not what I said. I didn't say, I didn't say teaching. That was face-to-face contact.
That was like a social emotional check-in, face-to-face contact, time for them to ask questions, be with you, be with you.
Does that have to be twice a week?
Twice a week at minimum, yeah. And a lot of families didn't want more than that, I have to be honest, because they felt like it was too much. I had people who were frustrated with me when I started doing those. And I said, no, we need to see the kids. They need to see us. So, I mean, I had families who were thinking it was too little, families who thought it was too much. It was.
There was a lot of my kids showing me pets and.
Oh, there's a lot of pets.
And that's okay. I mean, you know, but it's okay. I guess my point is that my pets.
It's definitely okay. And first of all, I feel like you're.
This has been so.
And it's not an attack on, you know. At least for me, this is not an attack on a particular teacher or, or anybody's, you know, anybody individually. I think we could all agree globally, it's not working for different reasons. So you're saying young parents didn't even want the one hour. Well, that's illegal. Like, they have to.
But what if I do force myself to do that?
No, but I'm just saying, you're giving, oh, some people thought it was too much. Like, okay, but I think what we have to come here and decide is like, this is the amount that we want. Like, this is what we agree on. It's this many hours of teaching. And the check-in time, while I did find that socially beneficial for my kids, definitely, it wasn't teaching. And I guess that's something I want to make clear, like, the check-in times in the fourth grade, Ms. Chaplin, again, who I commend, it was check-in time. Kids showed pets, kids chatting. They cannot help themselves. It's like, that was the first time when like they're talking to people again. I mean, they're basically, you know, living a very isolated life. So I'm not blaming anybody. I'm just telling you that, like, that's how it was. And I'm not, I don't think I'm alone. But like those check-ins were check-ins. They were social. There was a little bit of work, like, but mostly it was social. So there wasn't any teaching. And I guess that's kind of the point that a lot of people say, it's like, okay, but the teaching wasn't really there because that little bit of time, you know, it just, it just goes. It's a habit, you know, it's on. So what I will say is, and I kind of leave it, I, you know, and my thing is, the times where I did have one-on-one with all, any teacher, specials, Mr. Audet, by the way, I think nailed it. Like, if you want to use somebody as an example, he did 15 minutes with each kid. And it was one-on-one and he was able to make it work, you know, with every instrument in the thing, you know, I mean, 15 minutes.
He did groups too, and he made it work.
But, but, so I think the art teacher, everybody individually, when you had a one-on-one, Ms. Curtis, she would do math, you know, it worked. But the group settings are not going to work as teaching. So that's my two cents going forward. Like, it doesn't, it didn't work.
And we didn't teach it.
We had, it's a.
I guess it's my point that some teachers didn't, you know, I will say that, you know.
I personally think, and if you look at a test score, I mean, people take a test score. Like, so I think it's a little subjective to say like, oh, it definitely works.
Oh, no, and I'm not saying that.
You know, I mean, the kids being happy, the kids being happy is different than, than their aptitude at this point in the year.
Can I just summarize for a second? Then I just want to tell you how much I appreciate your comment because this is really helpful to us, this kind of feedback.
Yeah.
The feedback that we get on a computer screen is really hard. And I appreciate hearing all this. And I know that our teachers do as well. And this is something that together, we can work with each other and come up with something, a better plan for heaven forbid.
Right. So that was, you know, so I think more one-on-one or smaller groups, more mandatory time with the teacher for teaching. Much more. I mean, I don't know if it makes teachers go over their hours or what, but like a lot more hours. Because I mean, our days were a lot of free time.
This debate's going to carry on. We do have to move on in a minute. But the problem is, I didn't agree with that. Because I had three hours of time that I was doing on IXL with my kids reading. I checked on to the classes for the social component. But otherwise, that power being taken out of the day now made my kids' learning day up to four hours instead of the three that I was holding them to. And a lot of days, the classes checking in, showing your dog and checking out the pool was not really working for me when I needed them to get back to business and do some reading and let's get.
Well, I agree. Which is why I think Rutland Town School, I don't want to do IXL. I mean, it's a thing. It's a interesting thing, like IXL for everyone.
Yeah, so I let them check in when they wanted to and out when they didn't. And that's exactly why we did it, because we were trying to get the learning in my house. But another house may not have anybody supervising at all. So we got a lot of different things. Last comment if I can, real quick, Ms. Sanders.
I just want to know, do you guys have any like money or any, if there's a way that you can be given online, online teaching classes in the time that you have left with the teachers? Should this go forward and then we have to do homeschooling? Is there any resources for the teachers to learn how to present their lessons? So that it isn't a hangout. Because a hangout was an education. It was hanging out. And it was social. But I saw my kids progressively get depressed over this. And they checked out. They did not want to be at school. And so my biggest complaint is that they weren't taught. They, they got their lessons. It was very organized. We did the work. But I think if it was delivered in a different way, and maybe as, as a professional, you just need to learn how to deliver it. If these online schools can, you know, they, it's a big business. There's several of them on, you can Google it. And there's plenty of them out there. But if, as a town, we could educate the teachers so that they can present their, their work that way.
There is training for teachers during the professional development time from now on.
Can I just end on a positive to kind of tag on to what Kathleen said, like, what it looked like? And maybe it just worked for my kid, but Eason was there, Colton would have been there. Ms. Quigley taught every single day.
Yeah, amazing. Absolutely amazing. So the expectation, she sent out a, an email to parents, what times work best. And she tried to do her best to kind of find a time that would work for everybody.
Yeah.
So from 10 to 11 every day, they had a Google Hangout. It started with the share time. So it's almost like she kept, the teacher that kept it looking the most normal, I think succeeded the most.
She did. I mean, I have.
So what she did is normally their day starts with their calendar grid and they do a share. They did all that on their Google Hangout. And then she taught math.
Yeah.
And then she would kind of go into spelling and some things like that. And she engaged the kids because it's like, okay, I'm going to ask you this question. Now you're going to help me solve that. She had the kids doing flip grids for their math problems. And you have to go on every morning before Google started to solve your math problem. To book clubs, small groups. And then she did book clubs in the afternoon. So each day, she was having a book club, just like she did in the classroom. So she picked and did groups based on what kids would be most interested in reading. So the kids that were, there was a couple, like a girls' group, kind of in a boys' group. And she picked books kind of according to what they would want to learn about. And she read with them. And she then would move on to her next reading hangout, the afternoon. And then she'd skip a day because she'd have different groups. And then they'd have to do independent reading, which sometimes they did together anyway.
And then a nice question.
And then they do, sort of. The teacher that I think helped the closest to what school looked like.
Was what, I cannot agree with her. She really rose to the occasion and I think kept things business as usual.
And it was a requirement. You were supposed to be in class from 10 to 11. It was expected that you did your flip grid in the morning before you logged on.
What grade is this?
She said, or.
And would email.
And she would email the parents, we had the kids. So they were required to do stuff on their own. And here's what you're required to do for the week. She originally had it, like, here's what Monday looks like, here's what our Tuesday looks like. And then it was a little overwhelming for parents. It was like, okay, please maintain about 60 minutes of Dreambox a week or 60 minutes of Lexia. She sent a weekly half-week email, like, this is where your kid is. Please remind them that they have to do this or they have to do that. Or if you didn't hear from her, you knew your kid was good.
Yes.
Yeah. But I, yes, she.
Made it look exactly like school, except for nobody was.
And if you couldn't make it to the 10 o'clock, I think she just kind of moved on. She hoped that all the kids would be there. And for the most part, they were.
Yeah.
Well, I think, what I think is great right now in hearing that, and I think the administration hearing that, is that we need to find what we like, what we didn't like, and then make sure it doesn't happen again.
Yeah, it takes work.
So that's what I'm hearing.
And so we don't have to necessarily always look out to online learning. We may be looking internally right here for that answer. And the other, I just wanted to just respond to that. As far as online learning goes, K Group 8 was never set up for this. That was DeVry Online and Champlin College. And those guys went there and you got college kids, completely different learners than what we have. But I think the administration and us as a board can look at, okay, what did work, what didn't work? And this is where we try to move through in the fall. So, anyway, thank you guys.
Since we have such a small sliver of the student body, parents here, I think it would be probably pretty smart that.
Survey goes out?
There was a survey.
Not to the teachers, but to the parents.
There's a survey that's going to happen to parents.
And if they don't respond, follow up with them, no different than they would.
Yep, we call them superintendents. Sometimes the sales are hard though, because they're very generic questions. It's not.
Well, you could maybe open ended it again.
No, if you'd like, if this was a good survey for, and a good conversation to even have today without getting the results back and what we were looking at. So, yeah. But anyway, thank you guys so much for coming. Certainly stick around. We're going to move into budget. I know we're.
I think there may be some people online that want to talk.
Yeah, and actually, I don't know if you guys want to hang out, but I now have to, just to be fair, open the floor up to whoever's online. If there is somebody that wants to add on to this conversation quickly, I'll give you another five minutes if I can.
I need the phone number which ends in 80 that you're unmuted to please identify yourself.
Suzanne Sidowski.
Okay, thank you Suzanne. Do you have any comment that you wanted to make?
I just wanted to follow up on Abby's comment. I had a daughter in her class and she went above and beyond to help my daughter. So I really appreciate it. So.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Anybody else at home want to say anything? That was a thank you for Abby. Anybody else at home have any comments? Looks like Teresa, Sunderland.
Hi, Matt. Hi, everybody. So I think as parents, we saw a lot of great things. Those are just some of the stories that I can, I can echo. Erin Audet was awesome. Marissa Key Faber did fantastic. Colby had some great communications with students. Some of the eighth grade teachers, ELA in math, did great videos. The Spanish teacher had their online class every week. It was scheduled. It was fantastic. So I guess, Matt, these were some of my concerns waiting to August to kind of make a potential plan. Because I think a lot of these ideas are fresh in our minds as parents because we know what worked and what didn't work in our home. And we know our kids. So I think while the ideas are fresh and people are kind of hot right now, talking about these issues and afraid that this is going to continue, that I think a survey or feedback for parents, so Debbie and Sarah can get an idea of, you know, what, what parents thought worked well and what we might not want to see more of would be helpful. And maybe just some wet cement guidelines. I mean, as parents, we're not one to give out guidelines to our teachers. But we can certainly say this is, you know, what we would like to see more or less of. So I think August is waiting too long for these kinds of conversations. And I think our teachers might need to know. I mean, I think some teachers need to make some improvements if this were to continue forward. So, but thank you. And I'm just, another quick note, I don't know how long the meeting will go, but I just wanted to say, without getting teary about this, you guys did so fantastic with graduation last night. It was awesome. It's not what we wanted or anticipated, of course, but it was fun. For those of you who didn't attend, watch the video. It was entertaining. It was memorable. So just hats off and way to go.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate that. And I'm going to end with this comment. I will ask if there's anybody else that does want to comment from home. But this reminds me of what happened on the board several years ago, that I moved for a homework policy here and put in the Rutland Town enhancement policy. and put in the Rutland Town Enhancement Policy. And one of those requirements was that every teacher at the school send home homework, okay? A student or a family, and it was just essentially a guideline, that if they can get it done, great. If they're at a house that no one's helping them, then it doesn't get done. But at least it was there, because I had parents demanding that I send home homework every night, an hour or two when they work. So I started working towards a mandatory policy to at least send it home. We're not saying we're gonna grade it, but at least send it home. And I got hit with other parents telling me, you better teach them during the day, you got them for eight hours, there is absolutely no excuse for you to be sending home homework to me on my time. How dare you? Don't send anything home, we're not touching it, I'm not a teacher, and get lost. And so, this was, this is what makes education hard, is that everybody in here is in a unique situation. And so I tried to get homework mandatory, and I remember someone came into Sarah and was like, this is absolutely ridiculous, my kid's not gonna do it, and it's outrageous. And here I was trying to make a mandatory policy, because I thought we were helping people, and that policy is now not a policy. It never went anywhere, and it's still left up to the teachers, whether they send home homework nightly, weekly, or never. And it's up to the parents, really, and I think this was important. It's hard in America, and I watched the negotiation show, that in Lebanon and in foreign countries, they will negotiate over everything in the market. It's not seen as rude, you're writing people's faces, but they're like, that's not rude, this is normal. In America, calling your teacher and saying, I got a problem with this, or this is an issue, some people won't send that email, because it's not considered socially appropriate to be negotiating hard with people, to be confronting them, it seems confrontational. Um, and so I know I always get the administration saying, please let us know, but sometimes people don't want to be that parent. You don't want to be that person and reach out. So then the administration doesn't know. It's a really difficult job, and we now have a very major problem. All of us are in this in September, and there's gonna be some more meetings about this, and I think everyone's gonna do the best they can. And on top of it, Teresa, just to follow up, I think the summer contract doesn't have the teachers working a lot, and also they're entitled to some time off as a result of this too. So, what we can get people back in here and what we can do, uh, I don't know, but I think we can try and learn from this, and learn from the people in the room, suggestions, and then really start to get down into this in August and go from there. So, thank you everybody for coming in. Last, I guess I'll say, anybody else at home that really is dying to say anything? Uh, any administration official, anybody that really wants to say anything, I'll give you ten seconds. Thank you guys very much, thank everyone here for coming.
Thank you.
Really appreciate your feedback, thank you.
We'll celebrate early next week, I hear it's gonna be on early next week.
Okay.
I'm hoping my kids love the first place going around. Same. Thank you guys for the feedback, thank you for coming, thank you.
Where's you on the phone? Did you call?
Yeah. Oh. Sorry, it took me forever.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, thank you guys for coming.
So I'm gonna turn it over, Louis, if you're still there, I'm not sure if you snuck off on us, but I'll get to you, and then I think we should be all set. But Louis, we are set up for a financial update, I saw the papers that were sent home. Um, you can, uh, give us any summary that you may have, but I have just one question on a board member that they were looking at the travel expense column and still seemed a little high. Um, I'm not sure if that was just over the course of the year, what we were looking at, uh, and it stopped in March, because I haven't seen any director's orders go by me for travel in the last couple of months, but maybe it was old. So, financial update, Louis, if you're still there.
I am still here, Matt. Um, so, financial update, I don't have too much to report tonight. Um, we're still waiting on information from the state and the AOE. No decisions have been made by the legislators or guidance as to how the shortfall in revenue at the state level is going to affect us in either FY21 or FY22. Um, there's been many different reports that have been gone out from the state, uh, but none of them are decisions that have been made. Uh, we've heard anything from, the state is looking to borrow the money so that it doesn't hit the taxpayers, they're looking to take money from the CARES Act to offset some of it. And, um, those, both of those options would not affect the taxpayers or the schools. Uh, but the other things that we have heard is that they're going to short us our revenue next year, even though it's budgeted, or that FY22 is gonna be a tight budget year. These are all just things that we're hearing, but nothing is definite at this point.
Louis, if I can, I had a question for you on the news the other night, and someone asked me a very good question, and I had no answer to it. Uh, it came out of Mount Peoria, they were looking at a projected shortfall of a hundred and seventy million dollars. How is that possible, when everybody just came to school, budgets were set last year? How do we end up short with budgets that are actually set, fixed, and ready to go for this coming year? How do we end up a hundred and seventy million dollars short if the budgets were already fixed?
Okay, so it's the, it's the ed fund that's short. So, right now, they're estimating that the ed fund is going to be approximately sixty-eight million dollars short this year. And that's because a lot of the state revenue goes into the ed fund, that includes sales and use tax, um, travel tax, um, any, all the lodging taxes, all those taxes that are generated from people traveling and spending money that normally would go into the ed fund is just pretty much stopped in March. Uh, it's starting back up again, but it's starting up slowly. So they're estimating, these are all projections that they're making. They're projecting sixty-eight million dollars shortfall by June 30th, and then they're projecting that's gonna grow to a cumulative hundred and fifty, I've heard a hundred and fifty million, um, by the end of next year, which is equivalent to about twenty-five cents on the local tax rate.
Okay, so it was the loss of revenue that's led to the lack of cash in the bank essentially to meet our obligations then, correct?
Correct, it's not an increase in expense, it's, it's a decrease in state revenue, um, coming from the people that are spending money in the state, all the tourism money.
Any questions, board members for Louis?
I do only because I didn't get an answer to the travel expenses, each portion of it.
Oh yeah, travel expenses, Lynn saw broken down on your summary you gave us. Uh, she thought travel was a bit high, can you tell us about that?
Um, I mean, I'd have to look into it, because I'm not really sure what it is you're looking at, because pretty much no one's traveling these days, everyone's working remotely. Um, is.
So, if you're right, because I haven't seen any director's orders go by me, because I'm looking at them.
Is there a specific warrant you're referring to?
Yeah, attached to our stuff from Central Office was a financial sheet printout summary, and it's labeled at the top, Louis, uh, general fund, current year period through May 11th, at the top.
Okay. So you're not looking at a warrant, you're looking at the expense report?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, I would think you're referring to the two thousand dollars that's on the direct instruction travel?
There's a, there's, it seems like almost every portion of the budget or of the outline, anytime travel expense was listed, it seemed to be over budget.
Yeah.
It's curious, um.
So most of those, most of those situations are, um, teachers that are traveling for PD, uh, workshops, uh, meetings within the Supervisory Union. Um, I mean, we, we do an estimate of how much travel there's going to be, but the PD has really increased over the last few years, and it's probably time for us to just take a closer look at those travel lines and maybe bump them up a little bit.
Okay, there was also one, I can't, I don't have the handouts with me. There was also one section where it was for dues, and something else was several thousand over, and I was wondering what happened there.
Uh, so dues and fees, I'm looking at that, it's about forty-seven hundred dollars over, um, for direct instruction.
Yeah.
If I, if I knew these questions in advance, I could have looked up the details. I can definitely look up the details and get back to you at your next meeting.
Okay, that's, that's all, Louis, it just kind of surprised me, because these are areas I thought would either be the same or a little under, um, with the last three months, but thank you.
Yep, I could definitely look at those details and report back in my written report for next month.
Thank you.
Anybody else, any questions for Louis? Hearing none, thank you very much, Louis, I appreciate it. You can sign off for the night if you want, or hang out with us, we're probably gonna be here.
I have one more item on the agenda for the tax anticipation note.
One more thing, some of us.
Oh, wait, wait, Debbie.
We had one more thing.
Oh, Louis, go ahead.
Okay, so also on the agenda is the tax anticipation note. Uh, so this is a loan that we take out at the beginning of each year, it's for, it's a one-year loan. It's to enable us to have cash to make our payroll and pay our bills while we're waiting for state and local revenue to come into the school district. Uh, so starting on seven one, we need to make payroll, we need to pay the assessment, we need to pay some of our bills. But we don't have any money coming into the district on seven one. Uh, our first revenue doesn't come to the district until, um, September, when we get our first payment from the state. And then, um, the, the payments are from the local treasurers. Uh, so each year, um, and this is common with all school districts across the state, we take out tax anticipation notes. It's a line of credit, it's money that's just available for us when we need it, um, to make our, to pay our bills, make our payroll. Um, so we're looking to do a tax anticipation note with People Bank, that's our current banking provider. Uh, the line of credit, it's a line of credit, and we just take it out in small pieces as we need it so that we minimize the interest expense. Uh, the line is for one point seven million dollars, it's at an interest rate of one point nine three percent. Um, so when we, when we need it, we take it, if we have extra money sitting in the bank, we'll pay, pay some of it down. We do our best to manage our cash, and so that we're minimizing our interest expense, but still making sure that we have enough money to, to meet our financial demands.
I'm gonna motion, Matt, that we approve the tax anticipation note, um, and have it signed by the chairman.
So we're gonna motion on the floor from Lynn to approve the tax anticipation note. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Corinne Rodgree. Um, just a quick discussion on this, Louis, we're gonna have to do this every year? Because I thought we just approved it to be their revolving line of credit, you want this yearly?
It's required that it be done yearly, it's a one-year loan. Um, so we need board approval each year, and then I'll need the board, uh, board chair signature, as well as the treasurer and the, the board clerk signature, um, or the town clerk signature. Um, and then we have to send those documents in each year, so it is a requirement.
Perfect, the call, a vote on that, all those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with all five members voting in approval. Uh, else?
So, Matt, I'll send you the paperwork that needs to be signed, I'll touch base with you, um, this week.
Okay, thank you very much, Louis, we appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good night. If anything comes up that you need me, you can just call or text me, and let me, I'll jump back on.
Okay, perfect. And then, um, so it looks like we're gonna just move into the consent agenda real quick. Um, did anybody have a chance to look over, I looked over the director's drawers, I was fine with that.
I'm fine.
Okay, was there any questions about that? I think it's a little out of whack. The minutes, did anybody have a chance to review those or have any issues with those minutes?
I, I, I did read them there once, and again, I don't have.
Can we move that to next month then?
Why don't we? There's a question about, I think, attendance, and, um, I don't know how to go about this, but, um, I don't know what parameters you can run the computer, but when people are on and refusing to say who they are, can we boot them off after a while, or not? Because in the minutes, it says two people refuse to identify themselves.
But I think we finally got them to. We did.
I think we did.
We did.
It needs to be.
Because somebody, somebody texted Corinne, I remember, it was about Coghlan, because then Corinne was able to tell people how to.
Some people are not able to, they even sometimes they're resting the star or something, and they still can't read themselves.
I just, I just have a problem with it, reading in the minutes that two people refuse to identify themselves. So how?
I think there was one that we didn't know, I think, that there was one that we had.
So I went to Suzanne last time too.
Yeah, well, I can send Chris Lee Hold an email, the only question that I had about that, I actually have no personal problem with people not identifying themselves, because a person could walk into this room and sit down, and that's like saying, hey, we have your ID, who are you?
That's, that's true.
I'm not speaking for you, but I'm here for the open meeting, and I'm gonna sit here and please leave me alone.
But that's true.
I'm not gonna throw that person out of the room.
And also, I'd like to ask, um, I realize it's convenient for people to stay home and call and just listen. Um, but seeing how we're meeting in person, I would like the attendance to be in person and unfortunately do away with the call, because that just is taking up so much of our time.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I had, it was my fault that one.
No, 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 it still takes up way too much.
But that, it shouldn't have taken that, that was my fault.
That's a good one, I mean, let's have just a quick discussion on this, the board, because we need to be clear going forward, how we're gonna do this. I have, I agree with you, Russ, so Russ, you're saying you second Lynn on that. Well, we'll take that line if we need to, here was the concern though. I talked to one of the sheriffs the other day, and he mentioned to me that his wife still has not been outside since this happened. She has not left her home, she's not leaving, and she's not going anywhere. And after I left that conversation, I said, you know what, the fear is real for a lot of people.
It is.
And it depends on who you are, and what you have, and what's up with your physiology. If we come down and say you have to be here present, aren't we making that person that's afraid? And I'm not, that's saying that's addictive, she's making the decision that's right for herself. I don't care whether it's right or wrong, it's hers.
They can get the minutes.
But what if she wanted to call in and be a part of the meeting?
I think, then are you saying from now on until eternity, we're gonna have both, every meeting?
Yeah.
I want to go back to.
When's TPD coming back? TPD coming back?
They will, um, yeah, well, and we'll discuss that, because I have some problems with the school right now too, but, um, yeah, I think this time was just a failure to notify them in time, um, that we already need meeting in person. And of course, it's up to them whether they come and do it. But I just think it's redundant, and it takes, I know we get paid highly, but it takes up so much of the time when we have, like you said, we could literally go to midnight, we're not home, too mad.
Yeah.
But
Maybe.
because of the, because of the telephone, and, and I welcome them, and I'm glad they're joining, but as you know, when we hold our regular meetings, very seldom does anybody come.
Yeah.
So, now I'm, I'm glad they're listening in, but if, you know, it's like tonight, when they couldn't hear, some of them showed up, so they do have the ability to come.
Yeah.
Um, I just.
Let me ask that question, uh, is there one more board member, either Tim or Corinne, that's gonna add to that? So I have two board members meeting, there are members who are saying, yes, if we're holding an open meeting and we're gonna be here in person, this call-in is not gonna take place anymore unless it's necessary. Uh, board member calling in that couldn't make it, something happened, but, uh, Corinne, do you support that not, people not be allowed to call in, or Tim, you wanna?
I mean, I would, I could, I mean, my mind is valuable too, so I, I understand the frustration of fifteen minutes gone on without it. I would like to have some other option, so whether we have to stick with this and Told PPD. I just think that dialogue and dynamics that you can see live or on video are very different than what you're gonna read in the minutes, you know, so, but that's where I stand, you know, we.
You want to use that other option?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's a good dialogue, and I think they're picking up on things that, like, in the crowd that maybe they wouldn't have otherwise.
Well, part of the problem is trying to get them to identify themselves.
Or we need to do that, do we even need to do the roll call with them? Is there a law that's.
I don't know, I'm just saying it could be a way they can listen to us and listen to the meeting, but not necessarily.
Identify themselves.
Or not identify themselves.
I think it's the Robert rules, sorry to interrupt, I think it's the Robert rules, you need to, you need to have a list of who's an attendance at the meeting, right.
Yeah.
There's no difference between watching it on TV and interacting with people at the meeting.
Right, and you.
So you call in, then you can interact with people in the meeting, you call in and listen. You wanna interact with the meeting, then you show up.
Right, right, and, and that would cut the time too, so I mean, you can still do it, but not have the interaction on their part. Uh, but then they know what we're discussing.
And this one was unique, this is gonna be.
It is very.
I'm hoping this passes with the SU, but at the same time, what we demanded as a board to be here in person, and then Central Office comes down and puts an agenda that's not consistent with that, I call them and they ignore me, and then I'm sitting here having a meeting, trying to comply with everybody at home, because that's what they put the notice out for, that's my frustration, and that's why I'm bad out of shape with Central Office right now.
It definitely has to be one way or the other, but we, as, I think, as a board and administrators, it's better for us to be able to look at each other and discuss items than on a phone.
Yeah.
I mean, I just, I don't like that, like the kids, I don't like that loss of contact, I'm not that. We need to be able to, because we, humans say so much with just their eyes, their facial expressions. So you know what's going on, I just, I really did not like, yeah, did not like, um, being on the phone. I mean, yeah, there's some benefits to it, if I wanna have coffee, I just go, got it, you guys just kept talking, um, no problem, but, you know, I mean, that's just my personal feelings, so if everybody else doesn't mind, it just takes up too much time.
So why do we do this? I just wanna send Chris an email to make sure we're complying with the open meeting law, but I agree. And if next month we get this straightened out, I'm Chris Lee Hold.
Oh.
Yeah, I was gonna send it to Chris Lee Hold about the open meeting law, of course, to just give me, that we can cut off that at-home contact with it, given what's happening. Um, but I do tend to agree, and I think next month we'll have this agenda in line. I don't think we're going to run into this again where the SU tells us, no, you basically can't hold it in person or we're not going to notify the public that that's taking place. I don't think we're going to run into that again next month. I hope not. Um, but anyway, why don't we take this up next month? Because this is impossible for people to sit down, try and answer questions. There wasn't much tonight, but, you know, but I am trying to, I really think about that person that's home and hasn't left their house. And to be quite honest with you, I'm not saying she's wrong. Hey, she made that decision. She had the ability to. Good for you. And that's the decision you made, you made. But what do you do about public? And she does have a right to get in here, but you're right, maybe it's just watching the camera. But we don't have TPD tonight and the minutes do not reflect adequately. They never will. What could place on the board itself?
No, but I mean, I know because everybody was doing distance meetings that they had to be available for anybody on the outside. But now that we're doing in-house meetings, I don't think that are, and like I said, you're going to check out with your terms, so.
Yep. Perfect. I'll make one quick motion then that, uh, we approve the director's orders. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Corinne Rodriguez. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hands.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, Shauna, uh, for the approval of the director's minutes. We're going to pass on the approval of the minutes, so we'll have to approve two sets. Um, and we'll discuss the meeting at the end. Superintendent's report, we are skipping tonight. Judy was unavailable to be here. Um, I know she was down south. I see Chris is on the phone. He was going to listen in and he and I chatted. Uh, Chris Sell will be coming in as our superintendent starting July 1st. Um, the, uh, so Chris was listening in to be here tonight. Um, Chris, you don't have to, but I'm just going to open up the mic for you and all. Uh, do you want to chat with us at all? Anything you have to say?
No, just looking forward to working with you. I've enjoyed the discussion tonight.
All right. Thank you. And I'm looking forward to having you in here, Chris.
Want to come back?
I, I worked in the, I worked in the suburbs of Chicago for many, many years, so I'm used to those type of discussions, so.
Okay.
But that's fine. It was a good, it was a good discussion. There were a lot, a lot of good feedback that we got out of that meeting, so I do appreciate it.
Me too. Me too.
Awesome. Thank you, Chris. We're glad to have you onboard. We look forward to seeing you soon. Uh, principals report.
So I think you guys have all read our principals report, but highlight graduation. We've been doing a lot of planning for that and we were very happy with how it turned out last night.
Even today, I'm here, we've got to do this every year.
I got the families that had emailed that had said we should do this instead. It was awesome.
It was really fun.
Yeah.
It was, it was really nice.
It was really...
We enjoyed that. Um, just says our teachers do plan, were doing a lot of planning with report cards at the end of the year. It was a lot of logistics to get, uh, step-up day and class lists and everything ready so that every, we tried to keep everything feeling like it was marching in the same way it would be if we were in school. So that was our intention and I think the teachers did a really nice job of that. There were a lot of videos, um, slideshows that teachers presented to their students, pictures from when they were in school and things. So there were a really lot of nice things that happened this, this last, um, week of school. Um, Chromebooks are being dropped off. We have to have those for inventory and to run updates on them to make sure that they work well just in case we need them to go remote in the future. So we want to take an inventory, yeah, get to repair some. Yeah, there's some that need some help. So this, the next five days, uh, different letters in the alphabet will be stopping by to drop off their Chromebooks and any books they have and clean things out of their lockers, take their materials home. So we made it so there'd be a small number of people in the building, um, each day to do that. So, and that's being staffed by, um, paraeducators who are going to come in and staff the tables. And we have a whole protocol for wiping things down and, and all that. So, um, that went well with the eighth graders, so we continue that along the way.
Um, if I can say, anybody that's bringing their children to pick up and clean out their lockers.
Don't forget your bag.
Don't forget your bag and, and you will have, your children will have more stuff to bring home than they think. Yeah. So sometimes one bag won't even make it.
We have lots of...
I, I brought extra bags. Just gym locker.
Oh, yeah. Gym locker and classroom locker. I think Anna said, look at, I got all my summer clothes. It's like going to the store again.
Oh, my God!
And, uh, our maintenance staff has been working diligently to clean classrooms and they've been working on the floors and a lot of the classrooms, they're almost done with a lot of that. There's been painting going on. Our unit events have been, um, the updates have been almost completed, I believe, by Alliance, so that should be done. And we're just waiting on the, uh, nurses' room floor abatement to be scheduled. So we're on top of all those things and ready to go.
So Sarah, how's the bus schedule coming for next year? I'm only getting...
That may be one of the questions popping up, isn't it? How do we practice social distancing on the bus?
Seventy-seven kids on a bus?
It's on the list.
Well, yeah, we'll see.
Yeah.
Anyways, Mike, I do have a quick question, you know, because it was brought up earlier and I have said it, I know I'm not the only one on the board. Um, a little confused where they said we can only have three or four people in this school at a time. Um, I don't know where that came from. Nothing that I'm aware of. So I'm wondering why, I don't want to say the teacher, I, I don't know the answer. So I'm just guessing why the teachers couldn't come and work out of their classrooms if they're one person. You know, why all the janitors couldn't be in here working at the same time. This school is plenty better.
They are.
They were. The custodians were in here.
It was that we were told that when they just, at the beginning, when they were disinfecting, they didn't want people to come in and have, to have the custodians come around and clean up after them every single time, everybody, anybody...
If they went to the copier to the door to the classroom.
Right.
So we, then once the governor opened it up that you could have, um, we have like a rotation, just a sign-up sheet for the teachers to use the copier, to come in to use their classrooms. And we've kept expanding that as the governor's orders have increased in the size of however many people can be in the school building.
Now we have 20 teachers allowed in the building at a time. We love they still make sound.
Twenty-five.
We can have 25, so we're allowing 20 teachers to come in because that gives us custodian admin, front office are here already. So we've maxed it at 20 that can come in. And we don't want them coming in at all necessarily at all the teachers at the same time. So there's a sign-up sheet for that.
Okay. So we, you know, I'm curious because now of course, school's out, they've got a time to come in if they want to come in and work on remote learning.
Correct.
Um, to kind of, you know, spread the rumors, stuff up, get any ideas from other teachers, whatever. Um, you know, nothing is perfect. Um, I know this was a small, small minority of the town, but I, I've got to say that I have been a fool of those important a lot, um, from parents. And I think the main thing is in having tried to help one of my grandchildren, um, it's like going back to school all weekend. Do you know the last time I did the Revolutionary War and all that?
Because I'm here in there.
Okay. I, I'm in the older section where I should be home hiding and not going out of my house. But, um, anyways, I think what happened is it was bang. Thank God, I mean, we were ready to go from day one and we went on, but the parents weren't ready. We have students that really didn't know their way around the computer, didn't realize they had to check email, you know, for two, three months and all of a sudden, oh, that's where it is or whatever. Um, I think it was a combination of all these things that made it harder, um, for the parents and the students to do what they need to do. But now we realize that and, you know, if it's, teachers can come in and try to strengthen those, um, I think it's a great time. I mean, I know we usually pay them for a week afterwards and, you know, their classrooms should be in good shape because they've been used.
I think the biggest, I think the biggest thing is just feedback, you know? We know that we, we know we can do better every year.
Right.
And I, you know, we went with this asynchronous model and there's a number of reasons, but I just think we can do better and we just need to hear from, and I agree with what Teresa Sunderland said, well, it's fresh, well, parents may be hot. Um, I'm a mom myself. I paid out the wazoo to have a nanny and I, I can't do it. I can't work and, and teach my kid. And I know there was a comment about essential employees. The only people that qualify as an essential employees, if both parents are essential employees.
Right.
If both are. So I can't get daycare for my kid if my other half isn't essential.
Right.
So it, it is, it is extreme, extremely difficult for these families that like, I mean, we, we know. I don't need to go on and on, but it's, this has just been so hard for so many. And we delivered food to 36 families, you know? I have families that were like, we need more food. And it's like, well, this is only portion that I can get you. So there's other pairs and staff that's trying to get families food. There's a lot of other stuff behind the scene, but we can do better. Absolutely.
You've had teachers doing some of those things too.
Yeah.
You know, I do want to say that too. We weren't just teaching. There was a lot of kids, we were just making sure they were good.
But that's a whole nother story.
Yeah.
Thing I don't want to get in.
But I agree too. I mean, teachers want to do better too. You always said that.
Where our reality is fresh in your minds also.
Yeah.
So...
We need to serve some parents.
My second parent, I'm checking their email.
Well, it's not the second one.
I know.
I mean, I mean, I had what, a sixth and eighth grader and both their parents are essential. Okay, you tell them they're going to go to daycare. And, you know...
That was the other thing, you know? I, you know, following up with a lot of parents that are essential and kids, those middle school kids that are home alone, I can't, you know, we were visiting houses, you know? Our SRO was visiting houses for us.
I mean, that was the boat. We were, my wife and I worked all day.
Yeah.
My son and my daughter were home all day.
Yeah, and some of these kids are sleeping and some of them are depressed, not getting out of bed. Some of them are sleeping until three.
Other kids are just lying through it, which is awesome.
Yeah, it's just, we got to do better.
Yeah. All right. I'm sorry. I didn't even know where we were.
I don't think I was, sorry.
We're on that. We finished the co-principals report.
So we got the co-principals report done. We're moving into personnel. We're looking at any resignations. I'm not aware of any. Do we have any? None. Contract recommendations. Director of Maintenance is being pushed into executive session as discussed.
There are, there, and then there's, uh, contract recommendations. I don't know if you want to, if you looked at those, whether you want to discuss them or not or just approve them.
Can you read that to us with the contract?
This was, uh, current, um, fiscal year 20 non-union, non-admin contracts for increased consideration. Um, Tracy Zabaka, point seven eight FTE homeschool coordinator for $47,806. Sean Chamberlain, board report.
I think we need that in executive session.
Yep.
Because it kind of links with, you know, sessions and all that stuff.
Okay. Do you want to do that later, Matt, and go into your chairs report?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, well, then just take that all up then. Okay.
So we'll say that.
New new pay increases. We'll discuss all that in executive session. All right. Cool. Chairs report, I'll try and make this quick. It's already starting to shape up to be a long night, 8:15. So Cheney Hill, real quick, um, my recollection, I could be wrong, but this is just my recollection. I believe we have a contract for 85,000. So Lynn and I agreed to, I believe that's the amount that came through. And then I signed and executed, gave them 30 or 45 days to inspect the property. So good thing is we got 85 the board was looking for, at least the, uh, not the best, but we got 85 at least on the contract now. The person is looking and converting it to a two-to-three bedroom. They have about 30 to 45 days to work through this with contractors to see the conversion price. They ran into the first issue and I knew it was happening anyway. Uh, they went to do the SEPTIC and the state of Vermont came back and I, I already knew what they were asking. Uh, I'm surprised they didn't know right from the get-go anyway. The state of Vermont came back and said, okay, what was the traditional use for the building? Well, it was a school in 1967 until we moved here and then afterwards Cheney Hill was used as a community center and this and that by the town. So I directed them to Mary Ashpaw for historical uses. She might know, but, uh, so Mary's going to let them know that. But in addition, the state of Vermont is granting a sub, or a SEPTIC permit saying that existing system in the ground is going to be enough to handle a two- or three-bedroom house. They may do some digging up of the system to figure out what size tank they have.
Like, we just looked through that.
No, we did a SEPTIC inspection to make sure it's okay and that it's, it's functioning.
Yes, but they know what it is.
So they are going to use that as much as possible, but the problem is I don't have that SEPTIC report unless anybody wants to follow it through to me because I don't know where that went from a year or two ago. My understanding...
I can't remember who did it.
Tracy Hubbard. So my recollection is Tracy Hubbard did it, but it was just pop the pop, pump it and say, it appears that it's functioning normally. Well, it should because no one's used it. So...
Yeah, I thought it was more in-depth than that.
So, but he, he, he may have, but how do you? Yeah, I know it was Tracy though, um, who did that.
Why don't you just contact them?
So it doesn't matter because they need to certify to the state of Vermont what the size of the tank is, what the size of the system is, what the beach field does. Well, how do you do that when you bury the dog? So the, that's the problem with state of Vermont. Happens every time. I see it in my office, five times a year. So the next problem is they turn and said, okay, well, where's the beach field? What's going on with everything? Not only that, where are the neighbors' wells? What's the isolation distances between the neighbors' water wells? What's your SEPTIC is? What's going on? And everyone sits down and going, uh, that's where it's held up right now. They're going to work it and we'll see what we come up with. So that's Cheney Hill. They're working through it. We'll see where they go. Uh, next thing is 19-acre land purchased. Next thing is 19-acre land purchased, that went fantastic on Saturday with the storm. We got it closed on Friday, we closed 11 o'clock in the morning, we acquired the 19.42 acres, which is incredible, I think, no one knows what's out back. This was my backyard growing up as a kid, it's the reason why I'm on the school board and part, and that's why I'm so heavily focused on the grounds, because you're all essentially in my backyard that I spent my childhood with. And that's why I think it's important for the school to look great for people coming in the front door, it's gonna be great in the backyard, and it was in rough shape five, six years ago, it really was, and it's still got problems out there.
We had quite a few storms come through there, we haven't done.
So, we closed on the property, I was excited, I'd already had a meeting with Mike Rowe and Byron, we came Friday night and walked the land. When you guys get out there, you're gonna understand what I was talking about, at least some people will, some people will be like, "Hey, it makes its time." You don't understand what's there. I had Mike Rowe and Byron, we walked out the back of the field. About four or five minutes later, we walked into Grover, and they're like, "Wait a minute here, this is all..." It's really interesting what happened out back. We have trails all over this property, on the city's water line and on the power line easement. The trail actually wraps around Chisana and goes up the hill and hits the power line. And for whatever reason, in the last 30 years, it ate out 40 yards of trail, and that trail is now a forest. So, the people from Grover are separated from Chisana by a trail from 40 yards of overgrowth, and no one knew to walk through the bushes, and no one knows it's connected. So, give me a summertime, and that 40 yards is gonna be gone. I've worked out a good relationship with the neighbor, Mr. Goodrich up there, have him on board, because we're coming through his backyard. I pushed the trail away from my papa above posts, I've got lines out there just flagging things, so we can all see what we're... Instead of, "Oh, we're thinking of that, and thinking of that", I actually have a lot of fluorescent lines, you ever go out there and walking, you start to see what we're working on. But it's really interesting that we can walk out...
I don't think, I don't think there's anybody left at the school, where we used to have the old park course, and we used to use those.
Trail's still there, no one's been classed.
I remember that.
But, I remember that as children.
Yeah.
Talking about our buildings, no. So, yeah, my category, you're too down. So, I'm just saying, so yes, they, and as it went along through the years, the first thing was, wasn't Green Mountain at the time, CD, whatever. Right, at the time, did not want us using the property because of insurance complications. So, that's how the park course and all those trails and became overgrown, because we weren't allowed to use them.
Yep. Well, no, it's not those trails, and even the Green Road, as I call it, but we have a green trail, but starts at the bottom of the hill, the post road, and if you look down on it, it's just ferns. And it starts there, and it runs all the way around this school like a rainbow, just about 75 yards in the woods, and it goes all the way around the school up to Chisana Drive. And you can walk on it, you can mow it, and it's, it's gonna be wonderful. Once I get that trail up, and then the connection on to Grover, and when people start riding their bikes around, it's gonna be like, "This was all in here for us." Rowe even walked those and goes, "We don't even have to make a lot of trails in here, they're already done, we just gotta clean it up." And I said, "I know this has been in here."
I think at one time, we were able to leave the school through the back and go down to where Green Mountain, um, CD was.
Yep.
And that's in case of an emergency, of course, now it says we're gonna go down the sidewalk, which I have a problem with, because why won't we put them more publicly? Why take them out of the building if we're gonna put them out in the main road? And we had to stop that because of CBPS.
Yep.
So, I mean, that I would be more than interested in doing, because that's...
So, this is gonna be great, because at the end of the day, I reached out to Steve Costello the other day, I move too fast for people, talk fast, I move fast.
Yeah, you do, that's why it gets cars.
I got either 10-speed or I'm down to zero, it's one or the other. So, anyway, Green Mountain Power's gonna be meeting with me and Mr. Rowe at 10:00 AM on Monday. They were all on board with the project, at least via email, and like, this is gonna be great, and what I asked them to was, can we get this trail out at the bottom of the hill, that's gonna be wonderful. Green Mountain Power's meeting us about access to the gate, also about coming up and accessing the back of the property with the road leading the engineering building, or the, uh, the building down here, most people don't realize, going right out the back to CD and up the black water line is a, uh, is a road right beside it. And it starts at Green Mountain Power, and now we own the upper half of that road. So, anyway, I'm talking to them about access, and what do we do, and then also, we may have people coming down the road, we may have people coming out here, what can we do? Can I mow the property, do you mind me cutting some brush? So, we're starting those discussions at 10 o'clock, and I did not get the, I'm worried about liability, that sounds more like an 80s, 90s question. Yeah, it's been an 80s, 90s question. No one's been sued, we got trails at Northwood, we got all sorts of stuff going on, and no one's been sued.
Now, as far as the gate goes, just to give you an idea, every night, one of the guys from PD goes up and locks Northwood at 9 o'clock, whatever the timeline is.
Yeah.
There's no reason why we couldn't have that on, because they gotta come up right by anyways.
Yeah.
So, if maybe you could use that to entice them and let us use the...
Yeah, that's what we're trying to figure out, you know, and the hard part is, everyone talks about people causing trouble, and my response to some of them is, "Well, the kids these days", and I said, "First of all, I personally believe the kids are better these days than if you went back into the 80s with the kids that I had." I see, I think the kids are better, I think they changed, they're not the same, I honestly believe the kids are better. And then someone said to me, "Wow, they're doing all this damage", and I said, "Well, they did it in the 80s, they did it in the 90s, they did it in the 2000s, they're gonna do it now, they're gonna do it in the future."
The damage that was done in the backyard were not by, they were a little older and driving, and so that's not the type I think we're gonna get out in there.
Yep, and so I'm looking forward to working with Green Mountain Power, so here's the question. I got two things for you guys, one, I don't, it's kind of funky having me here every day, but someone's gotta do the work. And so, I'm working with Mike, but Mike's coming in here periodically, it's down here at the school, I know where everything is, I've been working back there, so we have that going on. I have a guy that I'm actually paying for out of my own pocket to be up here cutting brush and stuff. I'm having him sign a contract, and I drew one up saying, "You're an independent contractor, if you're hurt here, you're on your own, you're not under school insurance, you're not under PD", so I'm doing that stuff, uh, and I'm gonna cover this guy to get at least some work done, brush cutting done, and that's just a donation that I'm making for the school, essentially.
Now, the, now the school's over.
Yep.
I think we should do the same thing, unfortunately, we're of course gaining like this year. Try to pick a day or two, or a weekend.
Oh, we're going to.
And see if we can get some people here, because you work all weekend and nobody do.
So, Matt, well, so...
Well, it does, but it's all started out, because we're not a farm boy, you don't have to...
So, but here's the thing that I'm handling throughout there. You don't even know. The, uh, at the end of the day, here's the issue that I do have, is that the community day, I'm, community day I'm gonna be able to do, but the problem is, I just took down 200 yards of barbed wire fence out there, I bought the bolt cutters, I've done all the stuff, the fence is now dropped, it's on the ground. I'm paying the guy to cut it up, get it out of here and get it out, I can't use the community for stacks up, and number two, I can't get the community in there until we have a tree cutter coming through here, I can't turn them loose on chainsaws, I'm gonna try and get what I can. I had someone offer me an estimator chainsaw, I'll piece together what I can, but we are gonna need, um, some money, and we're running into two issues. One, we need the tree cutting, and there's certain things that need to be done. Kyle Taylor works for about 1,200 bucks a day with another guy, 1,200 to 1,500 bucks a day, so I need Taylor for at least a couple of days. The other problem is, uh, we're running into an issue on Grover already. It's not an issue, gonna work with it and just power through like we always do, we have 100 feet of our property comes out on Grover, basically takes like a lot of land up there. Here's our 100 feet. The, the 100 feet borders Red Grover's mom's house, and when Red was living, or his mom was there, he just went and cut out the backyard 50 feet onto our parcel. So, now the house and that homeowner that's there has a satellite dish over onto our property, and their backyard is over. Now, yes, can we make trouble about this? All day long. It's not an adverse possession issue, not with family members, you can't adversely possession of a property, but here's the other issue. I want to be a good neighbor. I only need 10 feet per trail. Do I really need to go up there pit bull and stake out my 100 feet? No. So, I'm talking with JR Bullock on the other side, which is, JR's going, "We just wanted to set it completely", and I said, "I agree with you 100%". He goes, "I'm gonna give you an estimator, we're gonna put the trail down through here, let's leave Mr. Almond's backyard where it is, let's just get an agreement by him that he's not taking over our property, we're gonna put the trail down through, but no one wants to walk by his back door, I hate to say it, Red built his mom's house 10 feet off the boundary line, the trail is gonna go right by his back door, people aren't feeling comfortable with it, and I don't feel like we should be in Mr. Almond's, you know, like, "Hey, by the way, a hotel just dropped in your backyard", you know? At the end of the day, we may possibly need to get some dirt to put over the pipeline, I will do that, but we talked about creating a buffer with trees, JR's giving us the estimator, but yet we may need some trees down through there to give the people the privacy. He's selling the other two lots immediately, he's closing the trail that's in existence on Grover now, so I may need some money for trees. I just hope the board are being inclined to give us some money today, at least for tree cutting, trees, and in to that effect, I would just say, I think there's some mods and ends around. We could wait till next month, I guess, and I'll cover things in the meantime, but I was looking for, one, approval to go around and the authority from the school board to be working on licenses with neighbors, to be partnering with Green Mountain Power. What can we get for our rights, getting a license for Mr. Almond, getting some trees, getting Kyle Taylor down here. I was hoping the board would be inclined to offer $5,000 anyway, uh, and if we needed it, maybe $2,500, we need a tree cutter.
How many, how many trees are there now?
What's that?
Approximately, what are we talking for acreage or number of trees?
We're, we could cut as long as we want, you can cut today. I'm talking a couple of days to get us off and running, and what I told Kyle on the phone last night was, if you can whack the trees down, which is what we need, okay? Start chopping things up somewhat, move on to the next tree, I'll use the community projects for them to pick the stuff up and put it to the side. Mr. Goodrich had asked me to not remove the brush nor have a chip, and I said, "Why?", and I thought it was a good reason. He said that if you want to with your trail, you know, chip some stuff. He goes, but, he goes putting brush files here and there and throwing stuff to the side, it's gonna allow rabbits, animal habitat, and your trail, that will offset what's going on with it, so if you could just think about that, and me, I'm thinking, that's great, but number two, I don't have to pay for all this too. So, if I can maximize Taylor to cut, which is what we're paying them for, and then the community projects to pick that up, we'll do that. And so, anyway, it's a combination, we need money for tree cutting, we need some for the trees up on Grover, we need a variety of things, not sure what the board's flavors.
Yeah, I know that you're running at 100 miles an hour.
Yep.
Okay, and I hate to put the box on for a second, but if there's that much data, why don't we have it logged?
What's that?
Why don't we have it logged? It costs us nothing.
I would say before anyone logs in, we go out there, number two, I just think it's inappropriate to put a skidder through there and buy that property and rip it apart, and see what happened with the Northwood parcel. I, we only have 19 acres, I don't see a reason to do that, I'm only talking about, A, the logging to put trails back together, there's trees in our way, there's chipping that needs to be done, um, and just on the trail sections is what I'm looking for, and two, after what happened on Saturday, there's branches hanging in a few trees, and I can see a few areas that he can cut dead trees, and the other ones, we're gonna have people traveling out there to have a dead tree hanging over a trail.
Okay, I understand that.
There's definitely, our, our playground needs to be picked up, because there's trees from that storm just down there.
Right, there's trees all over and over. But, the thing is, those trees are big, so if you're just gonna have them come in and chop them down in chunks, you're still gonna need some big machinery to even move them. I mean, I don't want to pay for them.
Well, some of them, I thought about rolling out the trail. I was talking, I was gonna talk to Kyle, and I will maximize every deal that we can for the school, but sometimes people are driving ducks and looking up trees, going, "There's a cherry, my God, you guys can make a fortune", and then I bring in, you know, a logger, and he looks up and he goes, "Yeah, no one really wants cherry right now, but, you know, we'll get that, that one is a cherry tree."
No, I'm just looking at maybe not, and I don't even want to make money, I'm just looking, someone might come in and do it for free, I can do a lot of it. Okay, we got, Kyle, Brandon?
I guess my biggest concern is, I'm excited about this piece of property, but I think we have more important things to focus on than what we're doing for us. That's just my opinion. I think it's gonna be great, I'm excited to have it happen between that neighbor or the town, meaning we need to use, but I don't think that right now is the appropriate time to use our energy or our money to focus on that. I think the students here, and the education that they get, and the critical that we put together, fire exceeds cutting trees, that's just my opinion.
You don't see those things go on separately at the same time? That's my thing.
If I did, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say what I said.
See, that's why we need to have the face-to-face.
No, I understand, but one of the issues is gonna be, we're gonna end up with people out there, A, that we need to take care of the safety of the trails. We didn't buy this land to post it and say, "Don't use it", there's already, in fact, there's people all over the trails, and I don't think anyone realizes it here. I bring in to more people in the back of this school now, in the back of the woods, even kids I went to grade school with here. So, if we now have a piece of land that's open to public, and it should be, and we got dead trees and branches hanging over the trail that need to be cut, and no one wants to grab a chainsaw and get in a ladder and go up the side of a tree and just whack a branch.
What happens if they get hit with a branch that's not on a trail?
What's that?
What happens if they're in the middle of a woods?
I was gonna say, we haven't opened it up, so if they're on there without permission, we're on there without permission. Now, I did make that phone call, kind of going into something else.
Yeah.
You didn't want to call them, so I called both Josh and John Dahl, who is the help officer. Our parks are still not open.
Yeah.
Only open for riding bikes, walking, dog, taking walks. So, we fall under the town of Brooklyn. And right now, that has not been, even though it says 25 people, um, that has not been opened up. They had a meeting tonight, before, just as I was calling them, talking to them, um, and they are not looking at letting it happen. So, it's gonna be another, at least two weeks before they open up for usage. And I had, and of course, um, Jason, with the softball, that's a contract that is half with Brooklyn, with the town of Brooklyn, and half with the school. So, he has to get both signatures. So, what I would suggest with that is, as soon as he gets select boards approval, then we can sign off and he can play.
Yep.
But right now, there's nothing we can do.
Well, they're playing up there now, they asked me, and I said, you know, that'll, we'll segue into that in just a second then. So, anyway, just pick up the softball tournament, I told them, I said, "Look, we're gonna bring it to the board, they haven't voted", I said, "My opinion is to follow the governor's order." I go to the select boards page, COVID stuff has been deleted, the page has been disabled, there's nothing in there about health regulations, and not a single thing whatsoever that they put out to the public. Number two, we're a separate school district, did their order actually close our stuff here? I can't find it online, and so, if I would have known that, or someone mailed it up or said that, I think it would have made it easier. Mike Rowe called me and said, "What do you guys want to do?", and he didn't mention to me, "By the way, the town shut this down, you can't play." What I said was, "Follow the governor's order."
Because it was closed, it was not a problem, not an issue, but regardless, he cannot play that tournament without a signed contract, without the insurance, and it has to be signed by both parties, so you're gonna have to get hold of Josh.
Yep.
And figure out what's happening, I mean, he cannot be playing up there without our proof of insurance and signature. And he knows that, Jason's been doing this a long time.
He comes here every year.
Yes, and, and I have no problem, I mean, those have...
I think he was just thrown off that the governor's order said 25, and he said, "Look, if we play up there and there's 10 on each team, that's 20 people, what's the issue?" And I said, "I don't know", and then I left it to Mike, and Mike was out there. So, this is the part of the problem, though, is because Mike must have known that they'd have closed for sports, why wasn't... That wasn't told to me, that was, "Hey, they want to play, what are you gonna do up there?", and I said, "Follow the governor's order", and now I'm hearing, "Wait a minute, it's not open for sports", so was this really a discussion for me, or...
Right, so, I mean, I can check in further tomorrow after their select board meeting tonight, because they met tonight. But right now, it is according to the health official, no.
So, let me, uh, let's approach these twofold, one, the first one, I'll just make the motions for it's ea, or make, make the motion so it's easy, that the board would authorize me to work on creating the trails with Green Mountain Power, neighbors on licenses, or you would give me the authority anyway, uh, on behalf of the school in negotiating the, uh, trails. And two, to include in that, uh, a grant of $5,000, it would go through here, I'm happy to put it through the board, I don't even plan on using, I'm not gonna expend it, but at the same time, we're gonna need a professional chainsaw guy, we may need some trees on that planting with Grover. We're connecting on three different places and neighborhoods, I, it's safe to say, we're gonna need at least a little bit of money. So, I would do it twofold, to allow me to negotiate on behalf of the town, and to work on the trails, and do $5,000, and I make that in one motion.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Kareem, uh, any further discussion about it, Tim, Lynn?
That's why I asked, didn't have the $5,000.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to talk to Lewis, we'd have to call him back and have him look at it.
Why not?
So, why don't I put in, provide you for that Lewis could, uh, the school has an extra $5,000 available.
I think, we ended up having a bit of a surplus at our lives.
Do you want us to call Lewis now? My phone is at 13%.
So, that's why Cheney Hill was so good, if it does go through with $85,000, it was just down that 300,000.
We're not gonna be able to use that $85,000 at all for Cheney, not for at least two years out. Because if the money is going into the capital fund for what we put out to the voters, and the capital fund can't be spent without voter approval. So, once the sale goes through, it goes into the capital fund, and then we have to wait to an election for a decision on how to spend it, and then, so we could actually have done it by...
I have Lewis on the phone, hi Lewis, it's Debbie, we have a question for you.
Hi.
Matt, you're on.
Hey, quick question, Lewis, the, I just put a motion in front of the board members, I'm working on the property up here. Um, I put in a motion for an extra $5,000 as may be necessary for trail work, tree cutting, uh, planting of trees up on Grover to put in barriers between neighbors' houses. Um, and the question that came up from board members is, do we actually think there may be an extra $5,000 around somewhere that we could use towards that? Um, or is that a concern, and we need to look into it?
Uh, which budget are we talking about? So, is this on January 1st?
Before July 1st.
To be quite honest with you, we only got 20 days left, I'm expecting most of that expenditure would be spent during the month of July and August. So, whether it's surp, I mean, however we do it, whether it's surplus before or into the new year.
Well, July, August does the new project, and we do have our maintenance budget that starts refreshed on, on, on July 1st, so if you wanted to prioritize some of that money, um, we also did get $1,500 back from the sale of the property, and I guess we can make the decision to use that $1,500 since it still relates to the property.
Yep, you had sent over 38, we used 36.5, uh, to get the closing done, 35, probably 1,500.
I'd rather take it out of this year's budget than next year's.
Lewis, you hearing that? Lynette would rather take it out of this year's budget than next year's budget, is that possible?
Only if the work is done before June 30th.
Oh, okay.
Come on, Matt, you can do it, 28.
Yeah, no, the tree cutter can't be here until August 1st.
Oh.
At least the tree cutting, we can get done.
Well, the next thing I was gonna ask for, what's everybody's plan for the tree that's down in the road, the tree that's on the soccer field?
Yeah.
Well, that's part of this, that's part of it.
We have trees, I don't know if that's an insurance thing, Lewis, we had a heck of a storm here, and we have trees down. Uh, Matt sent some pictures, because he was caught in the thick of it, we have trees down in the backfield.
Yeah, we, I was wondering about that insurance too, Lewis, that we should probably pay and then submit the bills to the insurance company. Um, but I'm guessing for the trees that he's gonna cut up and move, we're talking a cost of 500 to 1,000 for that job, for cutting them up, throwing them back into the bushes.
We have the $2,500 deductible.
So, that's worth it. So, we're not even gonna do the insurance, but we do gotta pay for the trees to be cut up anyway.
I just figured how they were here, maybe we could just get that included.
No, that's what my plan, I didn't know if we were gonna come up with something else, I didn't know if you guys were ready to put a call to somebody, or just wrap it into one thing, and...
No, because you told us yesterday, we just let Ryan know, we wanted to come look at it.
You know, if we're gonna need trees, we might as well include them.
We have to clean up our fields.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I thought that would be part of it, but Kyle Taylor, the, the, the person, first person we traditionally use is Bill Moran. They're wrapping up Green Mountain Tree, so he's not available for cutting at all, is my understanding. And I didn't talk to Bill, but I heard that, and then, two, the only other person I use is Kyle Taylor. Um, and he right now said he's booked for the last week in July, first week in August, so many people are doing projects and tree cuttings, and he's never been so busy in his life, but I said, "We can wait till August", and I didn't know...
If we're gonna wait, then we'll, we'll have to do it next.
Kyle could be here in, in August, and I was gonna also use part of that money to limo some of the stuff around, um, that we're working on. Byron's coming down here and using the tractor, I mean, we're gonna fold these resources in, but when we run into specialty things, uh, such as the tree cutting like that, Byron can only go so far.
Number one, I don't think the insurance will cover it.
Yeah.
Very seldom cover trees down, um, and our deductible is high.
Yeah.
But...
The one thing to think about is Stafford, the forest...
Oh, I'm already, I'm, I'm gonna contact them to have them just work in the forest generally.
They did, they did, uh, we, I applied for a grant like seven years ago or something, and they did a bunch of work for us with the Stafford kids to open up the trails back here.
I don't think they're doing it right now.
No, no.
No, but I'm gonna, I don't care if it's in two years, I got it, I'm gonna reach out to the program now, that's something that's coming out there.
Trees in the backyard, we have to get rid of them.
Right. Can we let Lewis go then?
Yep, so Lewis, do you, how much, Lewis, do you even have a computer now, or no, it's not an option?
Uh, I mean, if, if, like I said, because the system's still going first, if you have to save it for the week, right, because uh, we went with the refurbished option, which was a lot cheaper than we had budgeted, um, the problem is, uh, pay for that at a, at a this year's budget, when the work is happening next year, technically, we're not gonna be doing that.
No, I thought it was gonna be done this year, no problem, thank you, Lewis, we'll do it next year.
So, I mean, if you can get it done this year, then yes, we can find the money, if we get it done next year, um, I mean, we could also find the money, if that's a priority. It just would reduce the amount of money we have available to spend on other repairs.
Yeah, I've got that nurses' office floor coming.
That needs to get done before July 1st.
We did, like I said, we did beef up the repayment line, the budget process for next year.
Yeah. Alright.
Alright, thank you, Lewis.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome, have a good night, bye.
Was Mrs. Office in, is in next year's budget?
I, I, yeah, but I, I was trying to let it done now, but I, I just don't understand that.
On next year's budget?
Well, I don't know. Do we wait and see how fast you get it done?
What's that?
You may be lucky and find somebody that's got a few days off.
So, then, in which case, I don't send the money, and then, rather than waiting to get your back up.
You have a tree guy?
I have a tree guy. I was gonna say, I really would prefer, I think it's gonna be clean there for us, if we can get it out of this budget, not knowing what next year's gonna be.
At least, at least to start it, at least to start anything.
Yep.
I'll, I'll get his number, so put up to 5,000, and we won't say when.
Yep.
And you just keep us informed about the budget.
And we just gotta get what we can do. Yep.
Russ, you're gonna be the...
It just seems like somebody, like, we talked about, now we got trees down, now we're allowing stuff back, I mean, I've heard like 17 different things we're doing. And I don't have enough information to like say, um, like, "Oh, great, I know what we're doing, I know what we're getting, I know what's going on right now, I have no clue." I have open botland, we got flags out there, we're planting trees, I have no idea, maybe they can get the trees going.
Yep, well, I encourage you, and here's what my response to you would be. This was, someone said this to me.
I'm gonna get the tree out back, I got a chainsaw, dude, I can cut the thing up and throw it.
I'd love it. So, that's what I would encourage people, and what I'm gonna do, at the end of the day, I'm not paying for anything, if I have to.
Yeah, that's pretty big.
That one out there.
That's a big bit. That's a big bit.
We have, and we have people in the town.
But then, the field, I'm not actually worried about that, because we're gonna cut that and roll it off the field, be done. That one can actually be done in probably 30 minutes. We have it off the field and done, and I just throw it over the bank, we'll deal with it later. You know, and I mean, so that was not bad.
Sounds like it's a tooth fairy, pick it up, throw it over.
No, chop it up and roll it over, be done with it.
You know, and, and like I said, I just think the quicker we can get on the webpage, the quicker we can get on Facebook, and try and get people in here, pick a day, pick whatever, and see what we can do. We got trees need cut, anybody out there that is proficient with chainsaws?
Yep.
You know, that kind of thing, we have our wiring booth. You need to have your leather gloves, or don't show up and wear pants and not shorts.
Then we'll be here next week, we will even have that discussion. So that's the stuff that I'm taking care of. And the other thing I would mention to the board is that the time that I'm putting into this, the benefit this board has is that there's an attorney in here, which is, for example, the guy that's gonna be here cutting barbed wire, all the other stuff that I'm actually paying for. We still have him assigned, so he don't get sued. The guy over on Grover, that's gonna actually need a license that I deal within the adverse possession. You guys got an attorney coming in here, most people are stopping, going, we better call the town attorney on this and figure out what's going on. I'm right past that, no, do, let me just work this out.
I appreciate it, you shouldn't put yourself in that position.
The, I don't have a problem, because it has to get done. And if we don't, you know, we're gonna sit around here for a year, two, three, four. Who knows what's gonna happen? Is anyone taking the lead on this project? And, you know, this is it. So the board has got some tremendous savings, why you have to someone there to go.
Listen to yourself, we just closed Friday.
I didn't.
It hasn't been sitting there long.
I told you, my speed's zero or 10, I have one or the other.
I think it's also the time that we have to do it. I mean, the weather is, in Vermont, it can be smelling in October. So you're working against the weather, you know, it's...
But it's also, we have trees down now, I know, that have to be.
No, no, I didn't say that, I just, you know, we talk like it's been, you gotta get it done, we're not gonna get it done.
It just holds.
It always has to get done.
The, uh, anyway, anything else?
What's our other date, what's our next date that we can kinda talk about? Or are we at a hard stop?
We're looking at maybe a July meeting, if we vote on that, July 13th. It's somewhere between July and August 13th.
What's a, what are the, what's our next meeting?
We're not gonna talk about tree cutting, that's huge or something.
No, but it's gonna be like a five-minute special meeting before, or something, because we have three people together.
See, and this is the other thing. So I would encourage people, get out, go walk the trail. And that's what I was saying to Ross, is, it's out back, let's go walk the trail. Coming here on another day and walked out there, but it gets frustrating to me when I'm trying to get this done, and it's like, alright, what are you doing? The discount this board is getting, and the town is getting, it's huge. We got an attorney out there, 250, uh, working out this stuff and getting it done with nothing. I'm paying for people out of my own pocket to work out there.
I get that, but I, I don't wanna come in, in August and us have a deficit and us saying, what are we cutting, who are we cutting? You know what I mean, like, that's my only concern. And I mean, I get your passion about it, I'm excited for it. But I'm looking at this, I, this is giving me nothing, I have nothing on this, so.
Okay, so.
So if I say yes to $5,000, and they say, well, what was your reasoning for that? Ah, well, you know, because, because, yeah, magic, it was exciting, and I, I, I agree with them, and yes, but...
Okay, so.
I just have no information here.
I hear you, it's a $8 million budget, five grand, but.
So, Jim, I know that. Um, the 17th, we've got, till the 2nd, we've got negotiations. 24th, we've got GURKSU. And then we don't have GURKSU again till the 27th.
If they hold it. They're not traditionally holding summer.
But anyway, we just. So I just meant like the June 24th, you know, if we just had a little more clarity.
So let me, let me just write this, so actually, I mean, if this is something the board's not gonna support, if this put, let's take this, okay? July comes up, the meeting, Kyle, Kyle Taylor can't get here to look at the property till August. So Kyle shows up in August and says, yep, okay, I can get this done for a couple of days. This is what's gonna be, I'm gonna be around like 1,500 bucks a day, we're looking at 3 grand, we'll be here for two days, this is why I'm gonna do, and, 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 and. I said, great, Kyle. Next board meeting's Aug- August 15th. So your August days, if you're saving from me right now, I can't use, I can just do a quick consult with you, and then schedule me for September, because the board's gonna meet on the 15th, and approve an expenditure for $3,000 for you to cut the trees? I mean, I'm not gonna use it if it's not gonna be necessary, so.
I just don't think it should come out of that's person, I don't think it should come out of your personal pocket. I think this is something that benefits.
I made your chucking the fence and the other stuff.
Yeah, no, I know, I just think it's something that benefits the school, and so maybe it's gonna be for the... Yeah, the, the kids and the community, and I know you put a lot of work into it, and I don't think, you know, five trees is a ton.
No, I, I don't mind, amount up to 5,000. Um, hopefully we get it done really quick, comes out of this year's budget, which leaves my worries for next year a little bit. Um, you know, up to, and I know you're gonna be very fugal.
I mean, is there any way you could do a contract with Kyle? I don't know how this works legally.
No, you gotta come look at it first and walk around with me, and then he tells you.
But could any, you could do a contract with the hours, and you guys come to an agreement so that you can kinda spend the money now, even if the work may not be done? You don't even, I trust Kyle, he's a rep, you know what I'm saying? If you have to spend the money now.
Yeah, whether it's, the other thing is Debbie, who she has, and the tree business, they can get it now, and I'll take someone now. And I had that conversation with Kyle, that I would actually question if someone else is available to suit, so. What's that? You ready to call a vote on it?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Well, I'll, I'll go along with it, if we don't plan, if we're not planting trees. We're not buying planted trees on.
Yeah, that, I, I think we do.
Because the planted trees in fricking July, who's gonna want?
Yeah, no, it's expensive.
Let's talk about the fricking trees, I'll agree with that.
I mean, you can put an warning that we're gonna plant them, but it may not be right away.
No, you got, that's something I gotta consult with you on, number one. Number two, JR's giving us the excavator for free and doing it all. He just didn't wanna go down and buy a tree. So JR's doing an excavator for free, rolling it in there and putting the path in the hole.
Yep.
So I got an excavator for free, and I'm going, I may have to put up a couple of trees, and I don't have to. I can just blaze a trail right through this guy's backyard.
JR say, hey, can we get the trees planted in the fall?
Yep.
Can we do the trail now, can we get the trees in the fall?
He would, he'd come over there, and that would be an issue, and that's the stuff that I don't know about.
I think that stuff I could probably get you free.
That would be awesome.
You know, and I think if this tree's down, that we gotta take care of, and then we can take advantage of the tree company while they're here, to go take care of some hazard trees.
Mm-hmm.
Like, to me, that's a good dovetail.
Yeah.
I know, I can understand that, but, so, you guys wanna make a motion that rolls that together?
Yep.
Then I'm, I'm on you, I'm on you.
Yep, no, I'll follow it. Then with the trees and the plant, that's right. I mean, that's why, you know, the other thing is, I do need the involvement, so. The, uh, Lynn, you have your name?
Yes.
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 Tim, yes, Ross?
Yeah, based on what I said, yeah.
I mean, not only that, Louis, but you have to remember that everybody else had 80,000 on Cheney Hill. We got 85, so this is fine.
Right. Yeah, but we might be needing 385 years become fall time, I don't know. That'll be as my biggest concern.
I know, you know, I know, I know.
And I was saying, my goal is to work it out absolutely without money, whether I gotta use that stuff to guide and then put the community in there, but I've just gotta get to a point that, you know, we're at that. But anyway, that's good, because I didn't really know. I hadn't been to your place yet, Ross, I was kinda looking for you two. The, uh...
And then we would take combat, the kids love them now, it's like...
So that is Cheney Hill. Do we want to, Shauna, can you still hear me? Are you there or gone?
I'm here.
Are you picking this discussion up, or at least some of it?
Yes, I am, I can hear now that the, now that Sarah turned the microphone.
Alright, perfect. So I was gonna make the next motion, which is, is that we approve the Littler softball league, provided that they get both signatures. The Ruttland Town's approving it, provided they get the signatures and approval of the town on the second half of the sheet, correct? Is that an?
Actually listed first, but yes.
Okay, so the town is approving it and will in fact sign, but they are, they have to acquire the second signature of the town of Ruttland.
Great, the school board, you're asking for permission.
Yes.
But we can't do anything until he has, and of course, it's ongoing complex.
Yep.
And, and yes.
Okay, I never knew you had the town sign up, but.
They get, they get much more than that.
Okay.
Then there's another two second.
Well, let me ask you that question. If they're using our softball fields up there, and that's our stuff, they're not moving in Northwood Park at all, how Ruttland Town get half of the money from that 3,000? What's that? Does it really get in there?
Not gonna be right after, but they can do it for 10 years.
No, this is another one that we're, no?
Sides get $2,000, and you have to, they have to do the field, um, for use of having, because they may be all the ones that we allow in. And he has to have, provide the contracting, I don't know. Yeah, do we have the contract that we used last year for, I'm sure, the baseball league, softball league?
We got a copy.
We must have a copy.
We have the same one every year, so Central Office must have it.
So, I mean, and it's 2,000 to each side, um, and they have to have, they sign up, give us the copy, it's in the shots. Um, I'm not my problem, I'm the second to that motion.
Okay.
But of course, it's contingent upon them, we sending a signature from.
So I think we're saying the same thing, then. Okay, well, approve it, provided they get the signature from the town of Ruttland, then we'll have future.
I just wanted you to, and everybody to know what the contract actually says, so.
Yep. Okay. Perfect, so, um, any discussion? All those in favor, Superfly was saying aye.
Aye.
So, motion carries unanimously, Shauna, all five, uh, members voting, and that was to approve the Littler softball league, um, to go forward, obviously subject to the governor's orders, but provided that they also get the signature from the town of Ruttland before playing begins. Because they were just up there the other day, they went to the field for free, and taking care of that. I chatted with them, and I ran into them as well. Um, so anyway, so there's that, perfect. Last thing I was gonna mention was just briefly, while you're out there, we gotta get on the same page about how that, our new base is filled with grass. Shauna, yes?
I'm sorry, I did not, I didn't know who made the motion for the, to approve Littler softball league. You did?
I did, and it was seconded by Lynn. So I made the motion, it was seconded by Lynn, and then voted on unanimously.
Yes, and one more thing, there was a motion made regarding, uh, to authorize you to negotiate with Green Mountain Power, et cetera, et cetera.
Yep.
And it was seconded by Kareem, but I did not hear a vote.
Okay, vote passed unanimously, and that was to authorize me to work on the Ruttland Town trails, negotiate on the school's behalf, and an impossible expenditure of up to $5,000 uh, for logging trees and anything else necessary to effectuate this trail. Is that correct, or not?
You say, um, but she made the motion, which one did you second? I did.
I made the motion, I seconded it.
I don't want you to make a motion, get yourself.
What's that?
I know, I wondered. You can't make a motion ever.
Oh, okay, so. So Shauna, on that one, for the $5,000, uh, in working on the trails and authority, that's Kareem making the motion. Lynn, you're gonna second that? Who wants to second, anybody? Do I not have a second?
I'll second.
They won't even know you're, um, at the meeting, you never say.
So Tim has seconded that, we're revising it, um, and Lynn probably does make a great point that I shouldn't be involved in this motion, because it's authorizing me to do it. Uh, anyway, so I'll let the four vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. So that's, uh, four voting, one abstention, and it's all in favor.
Thank you.
Right, thank you, Shauna.
Thank you.
So I mean, we're running into, we're gonna talk about director maintenance, or when we get to executive session, but, and we're still back out with the building issue and the grounds going on, such as, you know, who's in charge of the baseball field right now? All the new clay that we got on there now is half grass. No one's coming down here to work on it? No one, I, who's, who's in charge of the baseball?
I saw that, too.
Who's in charge of this stuff? Who's in charge of the baseball? So I got people that'll come down and be like, alright, so this is what we're gonna do around here. I'm like, alright, great, who's in charge of the baseball field?
Who used to do it?
I, is that left to the rent director?
I think the rent desk, because I, I think the rent desk, I mean, half the time, I'm on my own.
But Mike does it, I volunteer, and...
And it, it doesn't matter, it's always been done really nicely.
Yep.
Um, so I'm not gonna...
I understand, but if it's, we hit the point that it's not there, we're talking to Debbie about building maintenance.
I don't know, ask Mike, maybe, I don't know if he's doing those deals yet.
Yeah, so this will be a nice segue for us, but I got the other day, and I finally had it, because I came pulling out, I locked the gate, and I watched the dumpster gate flinging in the wind, and I sat for a year or two in car pickup, watching a 100-pound gate, doing this in the windstorm out there, and then it blows open the trash cans, and everybody's looking at it, and it blows back closed, so I finally said this. I got out, I was livid, I got out. Last night, and the gate latches won't line up when it latched, so someone just spun him and left him, and the door's just floating. So anyway, so I opened it up, I'm like, I can put this back in peace, so I actually...
I'm sure I can afford to.
And I actually slid one latch in halfway, I got it latched, but enough that it kept closed. But I opened up the thing, just trash all over the ground, and trash is rolling out of the dumpster.
Well, that's our, this is the director, I mean, I think this is, this is the supervisor, this is the director of maintenance, who should be doing a sweep of the grounds. This is the director, I mean, I think this is, this is the supervisor, this is the director of maintenance who should be doing a sweep of the grounds.
And that's why I said it's a nice segue, because we can't, you know, I know Debbie's doing her best right now to get into it, but this, it hasn't worked for the last year or two.
It looks awful. It's embarrassing.
One of them needs to be in charge. I mean, I said this before, someone needs to walk around this building.
We gotta plan for that. It's gonna be the executive session, we gotta plan.
Okay, we gotta plan, that's executive session.
Beautiful. Last one, shed painting I had down that there was, that was about someone wanted to paint the shed and there was an issue with it and...
Well, Beth McReynolds was gonna do it with some kids when we first got school closure and I was not comfortable with having her have a group of kids come here to do that when...
She was willing to do it at her own time and we, I, you weren't children or families. I mean, I'm comfortable if...
I wasn't then.
I wasn't then either. We were just like...
And you do it now.
Yeah, so I spoke to Beth, just because obviously, you know, I haven't, you know, rehoused the shed.
Yeah, and she was really excited to do it with kids and she had a group of kids that wanted to do it and she wanted to do it soon after closure. When she asked, I just, we weren't, I mean, there wasn't...
She wants to go ahead now, the school's closed and they have their masks on.
Yeah, she had a whole plan, so I spoke to her actually this week because, you know, there was a group of, I think there was the Cooley kids and then Serrata. I think there was a total of, if I'm not mistaken, like seven kids, maybe no more than seven, that had come up with this kinda service learning plan a while ago, probably, you know, a year if not more. And they had planned to do it originally in the fall. Mike had told them to hold off on it because we were in the middle of rehabbing the shed. So I approached her because I felt bad if we wanna like step on their toes and kinda derail their project. And I said, you know, as soon as we get this shed, you know, in order, it was obviously the winter. So they had planned to do it this spring and then she had, during this whole situation, recently had spoke to the kids if they were interested. You know, even though school was gonna be over to do it in the summer, and she had come up with a plan for them to all social distance, not come inside the building.
We're not doing that.
She said she created a plan.
I'll talk to her tomorrow. Okay.
Yeah, she said she cropped it and came up with a plan to the administration and...
This was in March.
Okay.
Yeah, you said you talked to her recently.
Yeah, yeah, we, I didn't, I totally forgot about it. I saw it.
As long as like the kids, you know...
Their parents are okay, she's okay.
Riding with non-viking with these kids, that Serrata and the Cooley kids, you know, last week.
She gave us that whole outline. She was like, if the parent, these parents are okay, if I'm okay, we'll, we'll follow this procedure. But I forgot, this was like the first week of closure or something and I was like, Beth, it sounds awesome, but I won't do that right. Not right now, but yeah.
We'll call it tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, that would be awesome. I think like at some point throughout the summer...
And it's important for those kids.
I absolutely agree. And they planned this, they worked hard on it. It's kinda closure and their contribution, you know, to the school and I, I think it's fantastic. I think they, like, are doing a logo or something on the shed. Yeah, okay, well, that's good to hear.
All right, so we don't need any kind of motion on that one. That's done, chair's report, nothing left to do.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Old business, new business, anybody wants to bring up? And new business, anybody would like to bring up? I think we got enough on our plate going. Perfect. Uh, we covered the lease to the softball field. I'm gonna email him tonight and then have him deal with the town.
Are we meeting July 13th?
Uh, I, I talked about this with the issue too, but I left it on there. And the reasoning that we might wanna meet July 13th or in July?
If needed. I mean, right now...
I think we should definitely need it.
Why don't we just leave it on and then it's, we bump it as we get closer.
I mean, typically, I mean, everything changes daily, so...
Yeah.
Now Maine will accept Vermont, New Hampshire results.
I know, I saw that yesterday.
But if, if Maine, if in Maine, you have to bring a test result for COVID saying you do not have COVID and it has to be... It goes 72 hours before you get Maine. So if the two of them will get on the same damn page, I would put it on vacation.
Yeah.
You can call in.
But the problem is half the world's ignoring you and not following your dreams anyway.
Yeah, never know.
So why don't we just leave that, we'll leave that on for July then, Shauna, for our next date and then as we approach, we'll deal with it. I may, you know, it may make sense for us and I'll email everybody around. Again, I do not believe it's an open meeting violation law. Send her out and email to schedule something to get you knowledge. That's not a public meeting, we're not intending it to be and I think Supreme Court's ruled on that now. That was my training at Lake Nori last year. But anyway, the, why don't we leave it on, but I'm thinking it may be more beneficial to us to grab one of the last weekends in July and then dovetail that into our first meeting in August and that gives us a couple of months. I don't wanna come back here July 13th to go, no, we're still waiting, that's only a month away.
Yep.
And we just have another discussion, but maybe local meeting maybe at July.
That's fine.
And I'm guessing though, I just think it would be beneficial and helpful if we at least have a couple of discussions in August, you know, about what's gonna go on because...
I mean, we should have a plan, a plan in place that we can share with people.
And hopefully we start to get to more guidance, but they're gonna wait as long as they can to see... You know, it's breaking down and things are changing because for the first month, I was washed and I couldn't use the gas pump without putting the sand can sanitizer on. And then yesterday I used the gas pump and actually put a piece of gum in my mouth and I'm like, eh, it'll be fine. You couldn't have told me that two months ago. The, I thought I'd have to go home and set myself on fire. But anyway, that's like tonight though. We're having all the parents sit there in one seat and I saw them touching the seat, touching the table and I'm like, one by one, we just put every single one of them together in that seat now. And we're trying to be safe.
They can put their hands in their mouths, they're okay.
And we just put everybody in contact with them.
I make a motion to go into executive session.
Thank you for sharing it out. I appreciate that. And second? Seconded by Russ. So a motion to go into executive session by Lynn, seconded by Russ. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Great, thank you guys. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks for having us. Bye, bye.
Good to see you.
See ya.
We miss the kids, please tell them.
Shauna, um, this is Sarah. Debbie said that she'll send you notes from executive session if there are any motions.
That would be great. And also, can you send me of the recording of this meeting?
Yes.
Sorry, you can hear me. Yeah, I missed the majority of the beginning of the meeting. I really could not.
I'm sorry. I wonder what Greg was trying to mean to do. It's my fault, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right. If I had known that I could actually attend the meeting, I would have gone. So that's, I'm sorry about that. Thank you so much. I'll talk...
Shauna, what's your email address?
Oh, it's my initials are FLC Beaver Pond.
Oh, yeah, yep.
At Comcast, okay. And I do have a Google also, sorry.
FLC Beaver Pond at Comcast?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Shauna.
All right, and Chris sign now.
Yeah, everybody split.